Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Carlisle Select Board Meeting on Tuesday, February 22. I will review the agenda and then we will begin. Apology, I'll try to speak clearly too. I know the mask muffles things. So we'll begin with community input and then we have with us tonight the tech engineers regarding the Curve Street and Maple Street Bridge Designs. At 7:30, we'll, I'm sorry, at 7:20, we'll be talking with Ken Mastello from the Board of Assessors and Joan Ingersoll, the Director of the Council on Aging, are here to talk about the Senior Tax Deferral Program. 7:50, we'll be greeting Sherri Kennan from the Timbirnook Program, who'll be updating us on what their plans are on the Conant Land. And 8 o'clock, we have a joint, actually, it's not going to be a joint FinCom Select Board Meeting. Jim Dar from the FinCom will join us for a coordination meeting around, and we'll look at the draft fiscal '23 capital and operating budgets, and then we'll also review the draft 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Recording in progress.
Sorry, sorry. Okay. At 9, we will be discussing and updating where we are on the interim Town Administrator Search and the permanent Town Administrator Search, and be discussing the composition of a screening committee. 9:30, the Transfer Station Action Committee will be reviewing the charge and hopefully agreeing to that and making some appointments. At 9:40, the Town Administrators Report. At 9:50, Liaison Reports. And at 9:55, Approval of the Minutes and Warrants, with an adjournment at 10:00 PM. So with no further ado, community input. Is there anybody either on the Zoom call or here in person that would like to make a comment? Well, seeing none, then I'm going to move on and welcome the tech engineer who's here. Hi, you want to just grab a mic or yeah, you can stand there if you like and introduce yourself and welcome to the Select Board Meeting.
Madam Chair, members of the Select Board, both in person and virtually. For the record, my name is Jody Trumpio with TEC. We're working on behalf of the town of Carlisle on the two projects on Curve Street and Maple Street. You may recall that we were before you last summer to review our 25% design in which we took some consideration as far as some of the comments from the board in terms of the aesthetic for the, for the bridge as we advanced through final design. We navigated through that final design process the end of last year and submitted to the DOT for their final approval, which we did receive in January of this year. That completed our efforts as part of what we were contracted to do on behalf of the town. And now, you may recall, this was all part of a state grant program, the Municipal Small Bridge Program. And now the town is, has the opportunity to apply for the construction funding. And the grant, grant process is current right now with a submission deadline of April 1st. So I understand from, from the Town Administrator that you guys wanted to review and discuss some of the aesthetic that we had presented as part of our final design. I know the, there was some sentiment about the look of, of guardrail and the chrome or the galvanized finish. And we, we are not proposing to have galvanized guardrail per se. We are using a coated painted system on top of, that's coated on top of the galvanized surface that is the guardrail system that we're proposing. We did provide some photos and I don't know.
I think Tim has got them up on the screen.
This is representative samples of what the aesthetic would be for that guardrail system. You may recall that the funding for this was geared towards traffic safety improvements associated with each of the crossings where there's deteriorated timber, non-compliant railing systems out there today. There's actually some galvanized posts that exist on the Maple Street crossing. So we made a conscious effort to make sure that, one, we appropriately used the funds that we were using crash compliant systems. And two, to make sure that we were understanding the town's concern about the aesthetic, that we incorporated the painted system as part of the, a part of the project. The actual construction documents have specifications associated with the requirement for the selected contractor to coordinate that color with the town prior to fabrication. So that is, that is what, what has been proposed in response to receiving feedback back of the 25% design. I don't know if there's anything else that I could answer or questions that I might be able to take from the Select Board.
I have a question because painted to look like quarton is not quarton.
Yes.
And I, you know, personally, worse than galvanized steel would be flaky painted galvanized steel.
Okay.
So I'd like to know what, I mean, is this a baked on finish? Is it like, you can't anodize, galvanize. What, what sort of a finish are we really talking to? Your specs here says painted and that's what kind of raised my, I'm Kenny.
It's a powder coated, it's a powder coated system.
A powder coat, okay.
Yes, yes. That, that's what's, that's what's being proposed.
And that's on the post as well as the rail?
Correct.
Okay.
Some of the, we, we acknowledge that there's galvan, or excuse me, that there's quarton guardrail throughout several communities in Massachusetts. That is certainly an option. Federal Highway and working with MassDOT, they don't take that approach so much anymore because the quarton steel becomes a long-term maintenance issue if the quarton starts to corrode at a faster rate. And it becomes more of a hindrance for the town, for upkeep, what they believe this system with the galvanized system with the coating, excuse me, the powder coating on top is kind of like a belt and suspenders, suspenders approach for durability and long-term maintenance for the town.
Then, since that is what we're talking about in this, I would love to see the spec get changed because, you know, unless your contractor knows that we're talking about that, they're likely to just paint it.
Yeah, I mean.
And so I'd like to be kind of assured that we're not getting pink.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's, that's easy enough for us to do.
Are you saying that the quarton corrodes faster than the painted galvanized?
Correct, correct.
How long does a paint last?
Pink could last anywhere from 15 to 20 years.
I really only have one question, which is, what's a, we're talking about both bridges, right?
Correct.
What's the quality of the underlying bridge? You know, do we know?
Yeah, so as part, as part of the whole program, MassDOT inspects and provides information on the bridge on a regular basis and it's a two-year inspection frequency. The latest inspection reports show that both bridges were in satisfactory condition where it didn't need to be upgraded or replaced.
So if we have to repair the bridge itself in the future, does it compromise the guardrail stuff or not?
Unless you, unless we're talking about a complete replacement. I know that the Maple Street Bridges looks relatively new within maybe the past 15 years or so. And if I remember correctly, the, the Curve Street Bridges is in satisfactory condition as well.
Any questions from either Luke or Nathan who are with us remotely?
Yeah, I thought last year we had talked about wood, at least by Maple Street. You know, that big heavy stuff like they have on Monument Street. Kind of when you're going towards, you're leaving Carlisle, going down Monument Street, you know, towards the center. You go over that real skinny bridge, they've got that heavy duty wood, the heavy duty timbers. Is that an option or is that not considered?
There are options, there are wood options. Some of the details and the design details that we, we have unique conditions, particularly at Maple Street, where we have some pretty steep side slopes right at the edge of pavement where it requires the need of deep guardrail posts for proper embedment and those are steel.
Yeah, okay. No, sorry, but you can put the wood on steel, right? I mean, I, I don't think it's so much the, the posts per se as it is the, the rail itself. Because, and I'm thinking Maple Street because, you know, people take pictures there. Like that's a place that, you know, we will be hearing about it for years to come if people don't like it. And, you know, Curve Street is a little bit different. I mean, it's, it's by the blog and whatnot, but it's not, like that, that area on Maple Street's really kind of special. You know, so I would hate to, even though the, you know, the, the powder coated stuff is a heck of a lot better than, you know, the, the traditional galvanized, but I still, we're going to get, you know, we're, we're going to get blasted on that one. I think at least even if we, if, if we, you know, look at both options and, you know, wood is four times as expensive and it's not practical and, you know, then at least we did our due diligence. But I, you know, that's going to get, there's going to be a lot of negative feedback on that.
Yeah, duly noted. I think one, one of the things that we, that steered us away initially was the, the detailing on the transitions as well. So there's continuity, though, part of the reason why we're applying for this grant is there's a lack of continuity. We have the concrete post and cable guardrail that transitions to a piece of wood that's mounted onto the bridge. And there's, and those gaps are, are the safety features which cause errant vehicles to travel off the road and hit a blunt object. So what we would have to do is make sure that if we were to look at and entertain a different option from Maple Street, that we would have to ensure that there are federally crash-tested details, not just for the longitudinal barrier, but for all the transition and terminations at the ends.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree with Luke and I think, you know, I think, you know, both Luke and Kate, you know, suggested, I believe suggested wood when you were in last. So at least just knowing what that option is would be good.
Just to clarify with Luke and Nathan, I guess I don't as much care about the posts as long as they are powder coated as, but as the rail, I really, the rail would be ideal to be wood. But the posts, if they had to be steel, but at least brown steel.
Yeah, yeah, I am also just, I am not talking about the posts at all. I agree with you, Kate. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So round three.
65.
Yeah, or whatever it is. So we'd love to have you back to tell us.
That's fine, that's fine. I think the timing of everything now, we would miss the opportunity to, if we have to look at another alternative for the, the barrier system, we'll miss the opportunity to seek construction funding because we would have to send in the revised plans to MassDOT for their acceptance.
And the deadline for the grant application is?
April 1st. And it will take, it won't, it will take some time from MassDOT to review a revised plan.
That kind of puts us, that kind of puts us in a pickle. And it's kind of because, you know, what, what was presented wasn't what we kind of requested.
Yeah, can we, can we still do the Curve Street piece? Like, can we, can we split it into two? Because honestly, the Maple Street will be a huge issue if we don't explore that option. You know, I mean, it's, yeah, because that, yeah, I mean, that might be an option as well, you know, because then also too, it's just, it's a little easier for Gary's guys to handle. You know, one, kind of overseeing one project. But yeah, I think Maple Street, we've got to get it right. I'm not saying we don't have to get Curve Street right too, but, but Maple is, you know, that, yeah, that's going to be, yeah, if, if, you can't rush it.
So what's the impact on us financially with, regarding the grant?
With the current grant? The, the grant applications, the, the department is offering the, the grant program annually now. So this time next year, we'll be able to, we'll have approved plans for both Maple and Curve. And the town can apply for construction funding for Maple Street. If the town wants to apply for Curve Street this round, that's certainly doable. We have the approved plans and we can do that. If the town wants to revisit Maple Street and look at whether or not we can realistically use the wooden longitudinal barrier, that will take some time, revise plans, resubmit plans, get them approved. And then we can apply for construction funding this time next year.
I, I think it'd be worthwhile doing it in two steps, doing Curve Street first with the powder coated rail. Gives everybody a chance to look at it also. So maybe we have, you know, I think we should give ourselves that, that opportunity.
What a bad idea.
So that sounds like a reasonable approach to me. Are you, everybody else good with that?
Curve Street, I thought Luke said Maple's the most important.
Well, what we're talking about is.
In terms of its aesthetics.
Aesthetics, yeah. We're talking about Maple Street wanting to see what, what the proposal might be if we're trying to do wood rail, whereas Curve Street, we're ready to go ahead with the current plan for powder coated.
I guess, I was running Maple yesterday, looking at that. So the truck went off not actually at the guardrail, didn't really damage the guardrail, right?
Dave, would you mind getting closer to the mic?
I'm sorry. The, so Maple, I was running yesterday on that bridge and the truck went over not on the guardrail, right? It didn't seem, there didn't seem to be a damage to the guardrail. So I guess that's okay. It's okay for now, for another year. It sounds like you're saying it would have to go another year.
Just in order to receive the funds to construct, we would, yeah, we would miss the deadline to submit for this.
So it's not, I mean, all I was saying, saying, I'm in principle, I'm okay with it as long as it lasts, right?
As long as it's not a danger to even for another year.
Right, you got some police tape where the truck went out, I guess you're just going to remediate that. But the bridge itself, it looks okay. So I guess, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the, the underlying fact is that there is a safety deficiency that's out there, where there's a lack of transition from approach rail to bridge rail.
Okay.
And that's going to remain the same.
But it's our belief, I mean, we have to anticipate the town reaction. It's our belief the truck would have gone over anyway, right? There's no guardrail would have kept that truck from going over, right?
No, I'm not, I'm not, yeah.
Okay, because I'm not looking for more blame, you know, why didn't you, okay. And then the, so the other theory is that by splitting the package into two, it's faster for DOT to review other than the aesthetic test or is that not true?
No, two different things. We have an approved plan from DOT for both bridges.
Yeah.
And we're fine with the Curve Street proposal.
Yeah.
But the Maple Street is the one we want to hold off on aesthetically until we can hear about what it would look like or what would be possible in terms of wood railing. So we'd go ahead with the Curve Street Bridge applying for the grant for this coming fiscal year.
I'll go along with the majority. If it was me, I'd just get it done. Honestly, nobody's going to remember five years from now. It'll be a bridge.
Well.
But if you guys want to do it that way, I'm, it's okay.
It sounds like the.
I would strike while there's money and we have momentum. Who knows what next year brings?
Wow, I think we'll, I think the, the four of us at least are comfortable with what we're proposing. And so I, I will make a decision that we go ahead with that plan to split the two bridges and proceed with Curve Street. And then when you, after you've done your revision on Maple Street and have, I don't know if you want to come back and talk to us before you submit it to DOT?
I think that would be a good idea because particularly if there are reasons why we can't accommodate.
Yeah, yeah.
And I want to say that was our initial understanding, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
I could be wrong.
And, and if it turns out, you know, you very quickly determine you can't use wood for whatever reasons, then I think you should let Tim know that right away, our Town Administrator, so that we could go ahead with both bridges if we don't have the option for wood.
Certainly.
Okay.
Certainly.
There's, there's a motion in our.
Oh, is there? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize there was. Okay.
So I moved to approve the Curve Street Bridge, prepared by TEC for Phase 2 Construction Grant Funding under the Municipal Small Bridges Program. I'll just do it in two, two different motions.
Two different motions.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so any more discussion? All right, so this is the motion to move ahead with the Curve Street Bridge.
The Curve Street Bridge.
Correct? All right. Let's do a roll call vote, please. All those in favor, Arnold, I.
Oscar, Lilo, I.
Brown, I.
Odl, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you.
And I further move to approve the Maple Street Bridge Design Prepared by TEC for Phase 2 Construction Grant Funding under the Municipal Small Bridges Program, should it be determined that we are not allowed to use wood for the guardrail.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All right, roll call vote, please. All those in favor, Arnold, I.
Oscar, Lilo, I. Brown, I.
Odl, I.
Reed, I. All right, thank you very much. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and.
My pleasure.
You're all set with Howard going forward from here? Okay, good. Thank you very much for coming. You too. Bye-bye.
Thanks, we'll see you.
All right, perfect timing. Look at that, it's 7:21. So Ken, I see you're here. Would you want to come up to the podium, just introduce yourself and your, where you live? And then we'll move on.
And can I get my PowerPoint up here?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's, good evening.
I don't know if you, good evening. I don't know if you want to move that podium so you don't have to, maybe, is it on wheels? Or is it, I don't even know how it works.
I think with a camera, you can see them, you know.
I think that should work better.
Okay.
All right. Well, good evening and thanks for the invitation. I'm Ken Mastello. I'm the Chair of the Board of Assessors. I've been the Chair for the last four years. I've served on that board for 10 years now. So I'm here tonight because I was invited to speak about the proposal to amend the Senior Tax Deferral Program as presented by Joan Ingersoll, who is the Director of the Council on Aging. Joan presented to you folks on January 11th. I reviewed the comments and the notes from that presentation. As Joan knows, Tim knows, I had some concerns about that. I voiced those concerns to Luke, who is our liaison to the Board of Assessors. And you might ask, well, you know, why is the board interested, the Board of Assessors interested in this? Well, we don't obviously set the rules of the program. None of us here do. That's a town meeting decision. But what we do is we are responsible for administering the program. So, and of course, as the Board of Assessors, we have an interest in protecting the town's tax base. So we kind of view ourselves as the protectors of that, of that base. So that's why we're here. We're here really to talk about what we feel needs to be done to make some amendments to the plan and hopefully get something that will work financially and also work in the interest of helping seniors indeed. And with that, Tim had suggested that maybe Joan and I collaborate on this, which we did. I think that process was very productive. And the outcome is I think we came up with a plan that we both feel very good about. So that's what I'm going to talk through. I am going to spend the first couple of minutes just quickly going through some of the slides that Joan already presented on the 11th. And then I'll get into some that I've added that speak more to some of the concerns that we've had, some of the caveats that we see that need to be observed in carrying this out. But what we're really looking to do is present something here that we think is objective, but also tell, you know, sets a path for how we can get this accomplished. So with that, Tim, I'll ask you to flip to the next slide, which you did. Okay. So what you have up here is the summary of the law as written in Massachusetts. It's Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A. It's also known as the Senior Tax Deferral Program. And what it does is it permits communities in the Commonwealth to allow seniors to defer taxes on up to the half of the assessed value of their property. To be eligible for the program, you have, you have to be a senior, age 65. There are income limitations under the regulations as written. It maxes out at $62,000 in income per year. There, the interest rate maxes out at 8%. You can set a lower rate. You cannot set a rate higher than that. And moreover, you have to be a Massachusetts resident for at least 10 years and a property owner in the state for at least five. So those are the rough eligibility requirements to be eligible for the program. And with that, I'll take the next slide. Okay, I think I've already covered most of these points. So again, there's an income eligibility, there's a cap on the interest rate. And I should also point out that under the law, if the homeowner passes away, the heirs need to settle up with the town on, on any, on all the back taxes plus compounded interest. And, and that needs to happen within six months of the homeowner's passing or when the house is sold. All right. So let's go on to the next slide. Again, these are ones that Joan has already covered with you, so I'm not going to spend any day's time on this. Anyway, let me just start by saying we are familiar with this plan. Having served on the Board of Assessors for as long as I have, there've been numerous occasions over the years where I have signed off personally on applicants for this plan. I can tell you, none in recent years, but in the past when I did, all those applicants needed this plan. Okay, it was never a question, I don't think we ever got an applicant who submitted an application who didn't deserve to be awarded this, this consideration. Okay, and, and I'm going to say over that time, I probably signed off on at least a dozen of these. Okay. So as you know, Joan has asked to make some amendments to this. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, her original submission called for the, for us to adjust the income limit to $62,000. Apparently it's at 40. She proposed originally a 3% interest rate. And of course, the age limit is she wants to adhere to is 65 or older. Okay, the, Joan and I discussed this. And in the course of that discussion, what I said to her is, I don't have any issue in principle with the income cap that you want, the $62,000, I think makes sense. In a town where the average tax bill is $14,500, I think to find $62,000 income to be high is just not realistic. It's expensive to live here. And considering we're taking an average tax bite of $14,500, it doesn't leave much to live on. So I said, no issue there. The interest rate, I did have an issue with because it was my opinion, and I discussed this with my fellow board members, and we all thought 3% was just too attractive and would, would, could potentially become a magnet for participation from people who didn't necessarily need to be in the program. We talked about it and talked about it and we agreed that 6% seemed reasonable. I'll talk a little bit more about that momentarily. And finally, what I also asked for in that, of course, that discussion was some sort of annual review process to be instituted because I felt that there are too many variables that are constantly in motion as the years go by and very quickly we could find ourselves in a situation where we had terms that just were no longer made sense. And I think today's market speaks volumes to that. Next slide. Okay. So I'll just call your attention to the last point here on this. So this is a collaborative effort, as I've mentioned. I think an important point here is in Carlisle, we need to be especially careful about what we do with this plan. And the reason is our tax base is nearly 100% single-family residential. We don't have the luxury of depending upon commercial real estate, personal taxes to any great degree. It's really all single-family residential real estate that funds what we do in this town. So with that in mind, you got to, we have to be very careful about how we go about changing the rules of the, of the plan. Okay, and with that, I'll ask you to turn to the next slide. So now we're into the additions I added, so I'm going to spend a little bit. So now we're into the additions I added, so I'm going to spend a little bit more time on these to talk about what we, what we're trying to work to here. So let me just say, first of all, we are, this is what we're looking to do. Okay. These are the, this is the objective here. First, we want to create a program that helps the truly needy in this town. We are not looking to create some sort of entitlement program or some kind of benefit program. Uh, it really is a plan to keep seniors in their homes who might otherwise be in danger of losing those homes. So that is the stated objective, and, and both Joan and I agree that that's what we were trying to accomplish. So I think that's an important point to get across. So anything we do here really should have that goal in mind. The second point I'll make is that we look to set a market-based interest rate that doesn't create a magnet for participation. We're not looking to attract people in this plan who don't need to be in this plan. And that includes both current residents and the possibility of people shopping plans from town to town.
Shopping though, it's a five-year shopping.
It's a five-year, and Joan, you can please correct me if I'm wrong on this. My understanding is you have to own property in the Commonwealth for five years. I did, yeah. It's um, anyway, we're looking to set a market-based interest rate so the interest rate doesn't become a source of attraction in and of itself. Okay. Uh, this plan only works if you keep the participation relatively low. Historically, it's worked because participation has been low, but probably too low because we're not necessarily protecting people we should. Our interest rate today is eight percent. That's not terribly friendly. Uh, I mean, it suggests, you know, it, it suggests things we don't particularly like. I don't like what it suggests are things like, you know, we're, we're, we're charging more interest, really a, a userless rate that, that is nece, is not necessarily in the spirit of trying to help people that need the help. Uh, I think also a goal here that's important is the town now owns this debt if people are participating. To whatever degree is possible, we should be looking to secure that debt and make sure that when the time comes, the town gets appropriately paid. And obviously, the last point is, we don't want cash flow problems. I mean, if the town was engaged in too many of these, we'd have a cash shortfall. And if we're going to have a cash shortfall, at least have it be at an interest rate that cop, that the town knows it can offset if it has to borrow funds at a rate that's equal to or less than uh what it's potentially lending the money out at. So with that, I will ask you to flip, Tim. And I don't know, probably can't read that up there. I'll, I'll be happy to uh read what's there. This is exactly what we don't want. Okay. Now, I did some, some research of my own on this. And there has been a lot written about these plans in the last several years uh in local and national media. Uh, my understanding right now is I believe about eighteen states offer some version of a senior tax deferral plan. Okay. Massachusetts has had one for quite a while. Historically, participation has been low. Okay. Uh, so, but I have two quotes here that I think pretty well encapsulate what it is we are not looking to have happen. So the first one up there is from Money Magazine. And it touts the fact that uh that these plans are really open to people with relatively healthy retirement incomes. That's not what I'm looking to do here. Okay. If you have a healthy retirement income, pay your taxes. Okay. The second point is, is a quote from a, this is out of the Boston Globe from uh March of two thousand eighteen. It's a quote from a seventeen-year-old lawyer up in the town of Lenham who says, "I don't want to dip into my 401K to pay my tax bill. If the interest rate is reasonable, why not do it?" Well, again, you can take money out of your 401K to pay your tax bill. Okay. So these are not, this- So this is clearly what we're trying to avoid. Okay. Now, at the time of the Globe article, when that was published, statewide, there were only about a thousand participants in the plan. But I can tell you, it's my expectation that you're going to see greater participation in these things in the years to come. Demographics are on the side of more participation. Okay. Uh, the participation, at least as I observe in this town, was heavily correlated with the state of the economy. When we were in a recession, we were getting more people in the plan. When we got into economic expansion, we were seeing less participation. Today, we have no participation. Okay. Then you can flip. Okay. So why six percent? Well, as I've said before, it's not userless or overly burdensome. I don't think by setting an interest rate at six percent, you create the impression that you're profiting at someone else's misfortune. And eight percent, it kind of feels like maybe that's the case. So six percent seems to put you in a place where most people will look at that and say, not unreasonable. But it's also below the town's cost of capital. And that's important because the last thing we want to be doing is lending money at a rate that's lower than what we could potentially borrow for. Uh, and then again, the last point is, we want to confine participation to those who don't mind paying or leaving their heirs with a six percent interest rate on, on the taxes they deferred. That's why we got to this number. Okay. Tim, you want to flip? And the second thing I, we had talked about, Joan and I, was, you know, the importance of setting some sort of review process on this. And in my opinion, it needs to be annual. I think it should be mandated. Uh, and all you have to do is look at the world we're in right now to see why. We're obviously at a monetary inflection point. We know interest rates are going up. Uh, and, and inflation, who knows about inflation, right? Hopefully, it's going down. But the point is, whatever we agree upon and we institute into law is going to require revision down the road.
These are fixed rate deals. These deals-
That is not my understanding. I think the rate is set on an annual basis. It's not, it's not a permanent rate.
Oh, so, I'm sorry, each, you pay your twenty-twenty-two tax bill, so it's fifteen thousand dollars with this program. That-
Dave, I'm sorry, could you get closer to the mic? Sorry, if you pay your twenty-twenty-two tax bill, you choose to use this program, so say fifteen thousand dollars, isn't that itself a note at, say, six percent? That one lives at six percent.
My understanding, Dave, is it works more like a variable rate loan if we adjust the rate. We can say if, you know, if interest rates go high and we want to adjust it up later on.
I was under the opposite understanding, but for that year, but not, but-
Jo, Joan, excuse me, do, why don't you come up and speak into a mic? So thanks. Just quickly introduce yourself. Thanks. Okay.
I'm Joan Ingersoll, the Director of the Council on Aging. I think that it's an annual application. And so if it was six percent this year and you got your taxes deferred at six percent, and then next year it was seven or five, then that year-
No, but that's for that year's, I understand that part. That I understand. Each tax bill is its own note.
Yes.
But the note you sign today for the fifteen thousand dollars, that you don't have to repay till your heirs or whatever, I was under the impression that you now have set that rate for that however many years. That it's not a variable note. I mean, the, Kim would know.
I think it's like, you know, because some years you might do it and some years you might not.
No, that's, we're mixing two different things. The tax, you may just decide in a given year, I, I want to pay my taxes. I don't want to defer them. But if you decide this year to defer this tax bill, you can always pay it off early, I guess, but it lives itself on its own little schedule until things are settled out. It could be a decade. I, it was not under the impression that those were variable notes.
No, I don't think it's variable for that year.
Right. So we should have clarity.
But I think you could have that one living at six percent.
I'm with Ken on an annual review of the rate. I just want to be clear. I don't think it means you go back into the notes and change what people-
No.
We should establish, we should, we should-
I don't think it would change an existing one. It would just mean that if I deferred my taxes and it lived at six percent, and then three years later I did it again and it lived at five, I'd have two different things.
Right, exactly. So that, I, I think it's that way, not the way Ken thinks, but we should have clarity.
So well, yeah, we'll just, Ken, that would be great if you could just get some clarity on that.
We'll answer in like three seconds.
I uh, believe me, I've been doing plenty of research. I, I can talk to the people. It'll give us the answers on that. But that's a great question. You know, because obviously you want to, you're going to want to know that. Um, and with that, I think we can go to the next one. I got a slide out of sequence, so bear with me. There we go. Okay. Uh, let me add here, there were things that both uh Joan and I were looking for to add into the requirements of this plan that we would like to do, state law just doesn't permit us to do. Okay. Uh, I wanted a, an asset cap on participation. I mean, if I'm worth a hundred million dollars and I lose some money in the stock market this year, I don't want to be eligible to participate in this plan. Okay, I shouldn't be. Secondly, I wanted to see an assessment cap on eligibility. I don't know that if you're living in a three-million-dollar home, you know, you should be eligible to be in this plan when downsizing and other options may be available to you. Uh, there's another concern there too with that, but the point is, I wanted to see a few more guardrails in place on this. And unfortunately, and I, after we had talked, Joan and I had decided we better run this by legal to check to make sure that we can do what we're proposing to do here. It turns out, it's pretty clear under state law, we cannot. And I have a legal opinion on that. Okay. So unfortunately, as much as I would like to see that done, we just can't do it. Um, and I will bring up another, I have a couple of more caveats I will get into momentarily, but I just wanted to make you aware of those. That there are potentially some, let's say loopholes in the way this thing is, is worded, that we can't unfortunately close. Which kind of takes us back to setting an interest rate that makes sense. Because the only tool we really have to control this is the interest rate. We don't want that too, too low.
Ken, I just want to uh mention that you have about um, oh, seven more minutes. Uh, and I don't know if you want to allow for, might want to allow for a little bit of conversation.
Pretty much done. So Tim, if you want to go to the next slide?
Yep.
Okay. This is my last slide. Couple of things I, I would just like to point out here. One of the things I mentioned earlier is a goal we would like to see here is some way to secure the town's debt. You, you were now a lender in this program. How do you make sure you're going to get paid back? Well, one can, one concern I have, again, under state law, we can't mandate that the homeowner carry insurance. And as you know, if you don't have a mortgage on your house, nobody really can mandate that you're carrying your homeowner's insurance. Uh, you know, what if the property burns down? How does the town collect its money? Now, you might think that's not likely to happen. I can tell you, I personally abated a property a number of years ago that literally burned to the ground without homeowner's insurance. Okay. Very rare event, only have seen it once. But those kinds of situations could arise. Okay. Now, if we had a one-million-dollar assessment cap on the property, the town could be pretty confident that the land value would probably cover the, any possible debt there was for taxes. However, we can't impose that cap. So that's something to consider.
Well, no, but you're arguing the other way. You want it to make it eligible. A million or less.
Yes.
That's counterfactual. If, if a three-million-dollar house got abatement, the land value is certainly worth more than the value.
The land value does not necessarily change with the value of the hu, of the house, at least not the way we look at it in terms of one.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you've got a lien on the property.
You have a lien on the property, yes.
So it doesn't matter if it's a pile of twigs or it's, but it's on Carlisle land and everybody's got, those mega houses have two acres. Guaranteed, they have two acres. They do. And that's two hundred and fifty or five hundred, that, that's a bunch of money. That's more than enough, right?
Not necessarily. I mean-
I don't agree, but that's a-
No, I'm, I mean, if it's a three-million-dollar house, in theory, they could, if they're assessed at three million, they could borrow up to a million and a half under this, in theory.
That's like four hundred years of tax bill. So I mean, we should solve problems that we can solve, not problems that are-
Um, I, let me suggest that you uh finish up, Ken, and because we're almost out of time for this part of the agenda. Thanks.
So, you know, I'm just trying to point out a couple of the concerns here. Okay. That doesn't mean it's not going to happen. It just means you need to be aware of it. Okay. And, you know, and that's, so I'll come back to the original point. The way you're going to protect yourself really here is by keeping participation relatively low and setting an interest rate that kind of assures that that's what's going to happen. And with that, I'll take any questions, any further questions.
Thank you, Ken. Yeah. A question from Kate Reed.
Um, I don't remember when now because COVID has dilated time. Might have been a year ago, might have been a month ago. Anyway, I read a report that the state was actually considering uh funding the, actually um, the, this sort of program. Do we know where that legislation stands?
It has not happened. I've heard the same thing. And I don't know if it's still active or not, but I know it has not happened.
Okay. So I think maybe a lobbying, some lobbying, but you know, maybe I'll bring this up to Magic or to some other municipal organization that we belong.
Or at least in the absence of that, is allowing us to impose some rules that offer some of the protections I was talking about. Okay. Cause I do, and I do think you're right. It would be nice if we got some state funding for this.
Okay. So let me just confirm though that um, so the Council on Aging and the Board of Assessors are in agreement about this new revised um plan, and that's what we will see on our town warrant then, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's great. I'm, and I'm really appreciative of the fact that you sat down together and worked this out. That's great. Uh, any, Mark or, I'm not Mark, Nathan or Luke, did you have any questions?
I didn't have any questions.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have any either. I just want to say thank you to Ken and Joan for sitting down. And yeah, thank you, Ken, for bringing it to our attention. Um, you know, sometimes I think we're, you know, we're, we're so steeped in, you know, trying to make things, you know, uh, good for folks in town that we don't necessarily look at the big picture. So I really appreciate you, you having eyes on this and, and bringing it to everyone's attention.
Anytime.
Thank you again, Ken, and thank you, Joan. All right. So we're on to um the next item on our agenda, which is uh an update about the Timbernook Program, which has been uh they, we've gave permission several years ago for the Timbernook uh camp to use the Conant Land for a um children's uh outdoor education experience. And are you Sheri? Hi, Sheri. Um, why don't you come on up to the microphone? Sheri is the Director of the, of Timbernook and introduce yourself if you would, Sheri. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Sheri Cannon, and I'm the Director of Timbernook Outdoor Sensory Nature Program. So I'm also the Director of Extra Steps Pediatric Therapy, located in Acton. We are a program of Minute Manarc for Human Services, which is a nonprofit many of you are familiar with, serving the surrounding about eight communities um for young children and then far-reaching communities. We go from um birth all the way through the lifespan of people with developmental disabilities.
And Sheri, we don't have as much time maybe as we might like uh for this conversation with you, but uh, so I would, I think it might be helpful if maybe just, I don't know, were you going to um put Sheri's, any of Sheri's materials up, or do you want to just give us a quick? You want to just give us a quick sort of summary of um, sure, kind of an overview of what your current plan is, and then maybe address some of the things that I had raised with you via email. And then I know we have a couple of folks from the, who are butters or neighbors to- butters or neighbors to the Conant land that may want to ask some questions or make a comment too. Thanks.
So, um, in the calendar year of 2020, we served 360 children, um, over the year out in the woods here at Timbernook, um, ranging in ages from 18 months through the age 12. Um, this was huge during COVID, really through the last two years. It's been huge. Um, we were able to follow, um, the state guidelines for recreational programs and have some sort of programs throughout the entire, um, entire COVID situation, which was something children didn't have available to them. They, they didn't have opportunities for interaction. Um, and we did not have any outbreaks of COVID during the entire time at the program. So that was really great and really solidified the fact that being outdoors was the safest place for people in the height of COVID. Um, we did wear masks when, um, it was required, um, by the state. And then, um, since that time, depending on the situation, have been optional with children wearing them and not wearing them. Um, 40 children from the town of Carlisle in the year 2020 were served, um, by the Timbernook program, many of them walking to the program, which is really kind of nice, some of the older kids. Um, were just at that age where the parents would let them walk to the program and participate, um, and leave. Um, it's been highly successful, so it's grown, which I think is probably one of, um, the concerns of the town. And I certainly understand that, and I'm happy to address that. We've had big demand for the program. Our programs have been selling out. So we have expanded them. Our current offerings, um, are basically, we do two sessions in the fall. A session runs anywhere from five to eight weeks. We really look at the calendar and try and plot it around school, vacations and holidays and things like that. So we do two sessions in the fall. We're off between Thanksgiving and New Year's. We do a winter session, which we just finished. Um, this was the first year we did a winter session. Then we do two sessions in the spring. We do six weeks in the summer, more like a camp program, Monday through Friday. The, all the other programs are one day a week. And they run anywhere from an hour and a half to three hours, depending on what the program is and the age group. Um, and then we start back in the fall. So that is the programs. We are, um, maxed out at what we feel we can provide here, so we won't be adding any other programs to those sessions. Um, we do have requests occasionally for, uh, birthday parties that we occasionally will do on a Saturday or Sunday, maybe during the week, depending again on the age group. Um, we do a program on Wednesday afternoons for the older kids on the days that they have early release. Um, and then it's the younger kids that we see, uh, Monday through Friday, one day a week for the other programs. And then it's everybody during the summer when the summer's out. Um, so that's kind of what our programs look like, what we're offering.
You know, Sheri, I think it would be helpful, just having read through all of your material and, um, you know, it sounds like a terrific program. Uh, and I know many of us here in Carlisle are big believers in getting kids outdoors and for nature exploration. Uh, but I think what might be of particular interest is, um, a piece about playing the Timbernook way that's included in our packet and particularly uh, around the question of, um, sort of supervision and the staff to child ratio. Because I'm, I myself walk in the Conant land regularly and so, um, you know, I've seen where you have different things set up that have, that have expanded quite a bit beyond what we, you know, the first year's program, in terms of where you have children, um, exploring things. So I think it'd be helpful, just briefly, because I'm, I'm sorry that we don't have more time, but we've got a full agenda tonight. So just briefly, um, talk about that. And then I think we should pause and allow for some questions and comments. Thanks.
Okay, so playing the Timbernook way is that the adults are not directing the activity. And that's what makes Timbernook different from every other program your kids might be enrolled in. So we don't get up in front of the kids and say, okay, now we're going to do arts and crafts. And here's the project we're going to do, and here's how you do it. Our whole program is about stepping back and what we call tuning in. We present a theme for the children for the day. We put out what we call loose parts, which are gutters and tires. We may have scissors, construction paper, variety of different things. Um, we introduce the theme through a story, and then we invite the children to play. They may follow the theme with what we have out, or they may go do their own thing. Um, it builds imagination. We allow the children to try and resolve their own conflicts. We let children step back and wait until they want to join a social group. We're working on social emotional skills, gross motor, fine motor skills. Um, and so if you are walking by in the woods, you may not think there are any counselors there because we're not right out there in front and we're not directing the activity. What we are is we're sitting on a rock or on a stump or leaning up against a tree and allowing the children to use their imagination and play and work on their skills of play and imagination. And if, um, a conflict should arise, we'll stand up so our presence is made known more. If it gets heated, we'll walk and get closer. If we need to talk to a child or intervene, we will. But again, so if you're walking down the path, you may not think there's anybody out there. Um, several of our staff are not much bigger than some of the kids. Um, but we are there. We have a one to six ratio always. Um, many times it's a one to four, so a staff member to every one through four to six kids. Um, all, we have three certified trained providers, which have spent 40 hours at Timbernook headquarters up in New Hampshire being trained. We do continuing education. All of our adults, um, have bachelor's or master's degrees. Many of them are, and they all are in early childhood education, speech therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, highly qualified people that are out there working with these children. This is not a program where we have a bunch of high school kids or somebody minding the kids. It's grown adults with college degrees that are trained in childhood management and education. Um, in the summer, when we do have, um, a larger group of 15, no more than 20 kids at a time out there, we may have a couple of high school or college volunteers or staff, um, just to help. But there's always adults that are trained in childhood education that are out there watching the children. You just may not see it. Um, we encourage anybody to come by, to be, come to one of our programs, spend some time out there with us. We'd love to show you what we do, how we do, why we do it, and how it works. Um, we have kids that come to our program in the summer that have been kicked out of every camp that there is in the surrounding area because it's highly structured and they don't know how to deal with these children. These children come to our camp and they're successful. And this kind of a program can turn a child's life around if they're a child who is constantly getting a lot of negative feedback and aren't successful in other programs. And we can handle them and we're successful with them. And the setup and makeup of how our camp runs allows them this opportunity.
Thanks, Sheri. Uh, why don't we pause there and, um, first I'll ask, is anybody on the select board um, have a question or comment for Sheri? If not.
I do, I, you know, I, I do, but I'm just not sure that we, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that we have enough time to really adequately discuss this tonight.
So, okay, so what are you proposing, Nathan, that we, um?
Well, I mean, it's eight o'clock, right? And I think, you know, like what I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to learn more about kind of the original setup, the original discussions that we had, you know. Yeah, I know that I've worked with you on, on, you know, issues along the way. Um, but just like, you know, a comparison to kind of where it started to where it is now. You know, understand like the times of the day, you know, just like how has it grown? Um, because I think there has been an impact. I've been hearing from some of the butters about, you know, noise and, and other impacts. And I would just like to understand a little better, you know, how it's, how it's grown, how it's been structured and, and what we can do to, to try to minimize the impact, um, both on the Conant land and, and with the neighbors. And I'm, I'm just not sure that we have enough time to really give that uh, full voice tonight. But I mean, as, as long as we make the time, I think that's fine.
Yeah, um, there is a lot of that information in the packet. I don't know if you had a chance to review all of that, but, um, there's quite a bit of information there. But, um, you know, I'm conscious of the fact that some folks came tonight to, you know, have the opportunity to, um, interact with you. So I think what, what I'd like to do is take another five minutes. I know that's not very much, but then plan to, if you don't mind, Sheri, have you come back for further discussion with the select board? But I would like to hear from some members of the community who, who came tonight to, um, be able to participate. So, um, I know generally we don't do this. We just, you know, have community input at the beginning, but I knew that, um, both in that and John, you had spoken to me. So would one of you like to come up and just, um, either make a comment or, or share some concerns that you have? And then we can, we can take it up, you know, at our next conversation as well, but.
My name is John Lee. I live at 65 Lowell Street and directly in front of the Timbernook recreational space. And what I'd like to say first is that having run a similar camping program for 25 years, um, I, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for kids. I would add that I, I honestly think that the Conant land, and not because I'm the butter, but because of my concern for the woods, the Conant woods is not the right place to be doing this now. Originally, this was set up for, we were told, six to eight, um, developmentally challenged, uh, children who would be there, you know, maybe two or three days a week for maybe five or six weeks over the summer. This has now grown to be pretty much a year-round program. I don't know, uh, what the licensing setup is with the town. I don't know if the town is receiving any benefit for this. But it has grown to be a considerable, uh, project in the town. And it is boisterous. It's every day, could be every day of the week, weekends. So I, I would love to, um, hear this continued so that we can delve into this further.
Okay.
But that being as it may.
Okay, thank you. And, um, was there anybody else here that came particularly to, um, offer some input into this conversation? That would like to speak now? And again, um, I'm, I can say on behalf of the select board, we will definitely schedule another conversation about this on our, one of our upcoming agendas.
Yeah, come on up and then just. I've actually spoken to Sheri many times, um, in terms of where we were going to situate this camp. Where they moved it out of the Native American site. But Sheri, my understanding was that it was, as John said, you know, six to eight kids, developmentally challenged kids. It is now a huge camp. Most of the kids are typical children. Birthday par- not true?
That's not true.
Well, all my neighbors' kids go there and they're pretty typical children. Um.
Well, that just speaks to why it would be good to have Sheri come back again and we can really delve into this. Yeah. Yeah, okay. That, you know, I, I think we're all in agreement. It'd be good to have further discussion and, um, Sheri, you know, I know that we, we as a select board were enthusiastic when you first came to the town to ask for the use of the Conant land. And, and, um, we, we certainly want to continue to work with you to figure out, you know, how we can make sure this program is both great for the participants and good for the town. So, um, we will be in touch, uh, either myself or Tim Goddard, our town administrator, and let's see what we can schedule for the future. Um, I did want to just ask, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Peggy, but did you want to just raise about the parking? So, because that is something, since you have ongoing programs going on, Sheri, which we're not talking about suspending or anything, do you want to mention, uh, even just today, what you had written to me about the parking? Come on up, yeah, come on up, Peggy, so people can hear you. Thanks.
Um, I'm Peggy Wang, 30 Robbins Drive. I'm the town clerk. Um, but I did find it interesting that she said that their programs are an hour or two long. And their programs seem to be more like three to four hours long. And the parking and, uh, they're doing more where parents are staying. Uh, where initially they said that the only additional cars would be from the two to three instructors. And now you're having 12 to 15 extra cars there with their parents and the kids. So parking is getting very difficult in the lot. I know Dave had a hard time finding a space today. Yeah, outside here. Yeah, you had to go on to the. Yeah.
Well, you know what, David, I'm going to ask you not to get into that, but I just wanted Sheri for you to hear about that parking is a particular concern too.
It's not, you know, not just today. It's been, we're really noticing it frequently.
Right.
Um, and so there's, if you just look at their schedule, there are, where they say there won't be any parents staying, there's parents staying. So we're seeing a lot of cars there. It's probably the problem of the parking lot.
I just wanted you to be able to share that. And then Sheri, you know, again, I hope that we will be able to work, you know, together to figure out a way to, um, make this work.
You know, the town wants to take over the parking and take over the.
Yes, okay.
We are having to work in any way that we can. I will say that the program that ran today was a drop-off program. So the cars short of when they.
We can't hear.
You know what, Sheri, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna have you pause there though, rather than continue on because, um, again, my apologies for not having more time for you tonight, but we're. Well, right now, we're going to pause this because we've sort of raised some of the issues with Sheri. And then she's going to come back when we schedule another time for her to be at the select board meeting.
So, Barney, um, one of the things that I had asked for, you said was in the pocket and it's not in the packet. Um, if, if Sheri, if, if Sheri could just bring for us kind of what, what was originally thought and how has it grown? That would be very helpful.
Okay.
I do have a copy of the original contract I wrote out, you know, it was never signed by the town, but I did offer a contract and I have that. And I think that's important because there are some things that I do believe have been said here tonight that are what people remember were said, which was not exactly fact.
Yeah.
Um, but again, if that's what the town wants, that's what the town wants. But I only think it's fair that.
We understand.
We look at the facts.
Right, how we started off, right, what we agreed to. That's perfectly reasonable, Sheri. And all right, well, thank you for, for coming tonight and, uh, we will definitely be in touch about scheduling another time to talk with you.
Well, I just want to say, we've got something from Tim early this, or late this afternoon that had that contract. So, so it may, we just didn't have, we have not had enough time to look at those things.
Yeah, so.
We'll be better prepared.
All right. Okay, thank you, Sheri.
I guess what I was looking for was an explanation as to the growth and, and why.
Okay.
Right, right. Um, all right, well, let's move on to the next part of our agenda. I see Jim is here, Jim Dar, the, uh, Chair of our Finance Committee. And I don't know if there are any other members of the, um, Finance Committee on the call.
They're on.
They're playing do this.
Yep.
Uh, and then Wayne, our town moderator is, are you on the call, Wayne?
He is on the call.
Okay. Um, there he is. Hi, Wayne.
Yes, hi, sorry.
Thanks.
Just needed to turn on you.
Um, and let's see, and Peggy, you're here, great, as our town clerk. So I think we're ready to begin this part of the meeting. Um, we have two items on the agenda. One is a sort of a review of the current draft of the fiscal year '23 capital and operating budget. Um, and then we also have, uh, the review of the current draft of the annual town meeting warrant articles. And as part of that, I think we also need to get some clarity or, or figure out how we're going to move ahead on, um, some of the open questions about what is or isn't going to go on the town meeting warrant. So, um, Jim, do you want to start with the, um, review of the draft '23 budget? Okay, sure.
Do you have copies of what I sent to Tim today?
I made copies of the old.
Good.
And I, I think, uh, no, but, no, I've, I have one, yeah, but did. And I, I think, no, but, no, I have one. Yeah. But did you, were you going to try to put that up on the screen?
I can put that on the screen.
I think that would be helpful. Yeah.
Two pages.
Right.
And I'm not going to, I didn't intend to go through it line by line, but to highlight some things. Well, first thing, in terms of context, we had two overarching concerns or goals. One is we would like to keep next year's budget at two and a half percent growth over this year. And the second is, we have been very concerned about fiscal 24. Now, this is a budget for 23, but we're trying to make decisions now that will help to make 24 a little easier. And I'll come back to that. But I think almost everybody knows that's being driven in part by the changing enrollment at the high school that doesn't favor Carlisle at the moment. The way I'd like to do with that is go through, highlight a few things in the budget that, you know, either are just changes or are new from the last time I was here, and then talk about some of the things that are still open issues for us. And we know that the clock is ticking. So, you know, we're, we're pretty close on our end anyway to finalizing something. The biggest recent changes are in the first line, the general expense in town hall. And there we've added, roughly speaking, $20,000 for the Carlisle portion of physical improvements at the Ripley Building in Concord. There's been a lot of back and forth about this. There may still be an iteration involving town council as to the proper way to do it. But we decided we needed to budget it, and it seems a legitimate concept, anyway. Because the building belongs to Concord. So, and they're not, and they're not, you go ahead.
I'm having trouble finding it. I, page five. Oh, these are both page five.
There's fiscal 23 on the.
Yeah. And we're talking.
Just the first line across.
The general government or?
We parked it in there. I don't think, I'm not sure.
That's what I was, okay. I was trying to find that number. That's all. That's why.
Oh, no, that specific number is not, it's not broken out because of, yeah.
Got it. All right. Sorry.
But that's the issue, David, is whether, you know, what's the appropriate way for Carlisle to invest in a structure belonging to somebody else? So quite.
You know what, David, I'm going to ask you, let's see, we can let Jim go through. Just hold your idea. I know, I know. But I think.
I disagree with that approach, but you're the chair.
Thank you. Yeah, let's, let's go ahead.
We have also added back into this, we did not originally support the idea of an assistant town administrator, but we have now added back into it the $80,000 that Tim recommended earlier in the cycle. We've also added $30,000 to accommodate the increased fee that town council would like the town to pay on a retainer basis. So that's really the biggest change there. If we go down to police, the select board, as well as our committee, has had a lot of discussion about adding officers. Just to remind ourselves in a way, this is a result of an unfunded state mandate, changing the rules of the game. But it's also, as particularly Victor, I don't know if he's on the call, has delved into this, it is also partly a reflection of the fact that we pay a lot in overtime versus other towns that have more full time officers. So this would be, what we've suggested and what we've tried to budget is that we support the hiring of another officer this fiscal year, which creates an unbudgeted expense, and another one as early in the next fiscal year as possible. And we believe that with the offset of overtime, that that will add 70,000 to the budget, not the original 150 that Chief Fisher was requesting. That's a change from our point of view, but we do believe that's a solid number. I mentioned on communications, that includes contractual increases. We're still in the middle of that negotiated contract. So everything in there is already sort of a given. Couple of places I note about no increase until COLA, just to say, it looks like it's an absolutely flat budget, but there is no COLA in any individual line item here. It's all separate for the time being, until the select board makes a decision about COLA. On Board of Health, Board of Health has about a 15% increase in its budget this fiscal year. We did not support increasing it for the next fiscal year as well. However, we have reflecting here a request from the select board to nevertheless do so. And so that's, that's why that number has gone up. Let me see, let me go down to the school. Of course, the, the school has made an effort to accommodate our goal of a 3% increase this year. And we have also flagged for them that next year will, will be lower. They are in the middle of negotiating their contract with the teachers. So some of this is potentially still in abeyance, but they have made a real effort to deal with the 3%. At the high school, this fiscal 23's apportionment between the two towns will be pretty much the same as the current year. It's fiscal 24 when there's a significant change. The growth is smaller because their increased chapter 70 funds pretty much flows directly into their bottom line. Whereas the increased chapter 70 that we're getting becomes town revenue, it doesn't reduce expense the way it does for the, for the high school. Debt service at the high school, we always knew would go down because they refinanced it back in the beginning of the fiscal year. Let's see. And actually, that applies if we jump down to our long term debt, which Kim was able to refinance at the same time, reducing our expenditure as well. Some of these other numbers here, when you get into insurance and benefits, some of these are all hypothetical numbers, and they will, several of them will definitely change when some other decisions are made. And then coming down, the county retirement is a definite. They give us two years worth of, of cost. Fiscal 23 will be the second year. Every year seems to be a significant increase. On the capital side, the 269 is a little bit lower than last year. 269 is mainly made up of four items, two one ton dump trucks for DPW, another police car, which is, which is pretty normal, and a UTV for the fire department. That I think is all but about $20,000. The last thing I think is just a small item for the police department. And then we put in the warrant articles pretty much at the level of the last few years for the facilities expenditures, but I'll need to come back to that in a minute. All of this leaves us at 2.9% higher than the current fiscal year. There are ways that we can lower that. But we still have these things that are in abeyance. Number one are these contract negotiations, the school and the police. The second one is, we don't know what the COLA will be. We think we've provided for it, but we don't know. And of course, you'll be deciding that before long. That's an important factor. We also have ARPA. And we are hopeful that decisions that ARPA will recommend to the select board may help to reduce potential other expenditures, including potentially something that's in the facilities committee warrant line right now. So, you know, those things have to come through. We still are hearing about other unexpected things that are popping up, not huge. But this is the time, this is the season, you know, before, before the crocs start coming up, the unexpected expenditures come up. So, you know, we're a little concerned about that because it was so quiet for months, and now suddenly here we are. But overall, it is possible to get this number down in part with free cash. I haven't mentioned free cash yet. In the current year, we applied $800,000 of free cash, covering both the capital items and the facilities warrant. Now, that was because we had an exceptionally large amount of free cash, which goes back to the prior year, namely the year when everything stopped under COVID. So our free cash was higher than it's ever really been. We don't have an official free cash number yet. Kelly is working on that. But we believe that, you know, a normal amount of free cash could be used in this budget. We don't want to do that. We would like to hold back on free cash to some degree for fiscal 24. I would say it's somewhat analogous to a decade ago, when something similar was done for a bigger expense, but nevertheless for the impending debt for our school and the high school, particularly when the high school kicked in. The idea was to reserve free cash and for two or three years, reduce the annual impact of that. So we're thinking, let's try to do something to reduce this extra impact of the high school in fiscal 24, and there'll be another year of that either in '25 or '26. It's not exactly clear which one that'll be. So this would give us a tool to sort of normalize those years, and then deal with the budget as we would ordinarily do. So the free cash is out there, but we could certainly use some. There might be a little reduction in the facilities warrant. That will help. I think we will get down to two and a half percent. And we'll do it soon, because you're on a rapid timetable, and, and we're, we would like to follow that. And the last thing I would say is, we have not discussed any of the warrant articles as yet. I think our first glance at them is that other than the governance task force, they're all kind of, you know, conventional articles. And, you know, I think as, in terms of our vote, won't be difficult. I think you know already, Tim, but just in the list I saw, that the high school warrant isn't the original number, right? It's not a million and a half, right? 850,000. So, and the impact of that in fiscal 23 won't be very large, even though he intends to borrow it all, or they intend, probably late summer, to do the, repave the roads and fix the sidewalks, et cetera. And that's kind of where we are. So please, questions?
So, yeah.
I'm just looking at the warrant articles. What, what's it on there? 5085. What, so I'm not quite sure. I added them up to be way more than that, if you put the two. School, which warrant articles are referring to?
This is just the facilities.
Just the facility. So it's not the rest of the warrant article. Okay, that's what I was.
Because the facilities wouldn't be borrowed.
Right. Got it.
Unlike the high school, which is a borrowing.
But there's a couple of them for.
A couple of small ones that we, we have not seen those numbers ourselves yet. So that's why they're not reflected here.
Okay.
The two school articles have come off.
That's the ones I'm concerned about.
They've come off.
They've come off.
Oh, they've come off.
Yes. They are not bringing those forward.
They were in my packet. So that's why I'm.
They came off after the packet went up.
How much we saved just tonight.
Right. Wow.
I'm curious, because I was going to ask about that.
Remember, use your mic, please.
Did they come off because they're trying for ARPA?
Yes.
And so it's up to ARPA, that lady over there.
I don't know, David. I don't want to speak for them. I don't know if they expected both of them would get approved by ARPA.
They both, they're making the same logic argument.
Right. Because if they got one, I think they'd be happy for the time being.
But they're not pushing the other side. That's a to be later.
Right.
Except that, okay. So, all right. Well, I guess, I'm concerned about the ARPA. I understand. Yeah. Who took them off? I guess is what I'm asking. Who requested them to come off?
Scott had a conversation with Jim O'Shea, who said they did not want to put them forward.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay. Great. David, did you have some other comments?
So just circling back to the Ripley's, I mean, we don't own the, we don't own the.
I think we are considered, you know, part owners of that building.
Of the high school.
Yes.
But not of Ripley.
Right. I see. Okay. And many other activities take place at Ripley, not high school.
All right. So bigger picture. So you, you have a goal of two and a half without the COLA and without contractual increases, right?
Well, we think they can be accommodated in this budget.
But I guess I don't understand that math, Jim. If you have a zero for various departments until COLA, and you're already over.
Let's, David, the, our expectation COLA is already in here.
It's just put in some other.
Put in somewhere else. Okay.
Because the COLA is a difficult thing to talk about.
So you're, okay. So you're saying you want an all in budget of expense items, non capital items, including raises to be two and a half?
Right.
Okay, great. Now, the difference between 2.9 and 2.5 is about 129, 130,000. How bad do you want it? You've got reserve fund balances and OPED and other things that could just go down.
Well, I mean, the easiest way to do it is to use free cash.
Right.
Because, you know, we, we easily could use 500,000 of free cash.
Is that, you, you mentioned a typical year, but you didn't give us.
It would be about a half a million.
Okay.
But again, as I said, we'd like, we'd prefer to, to put off most of that.
So explain that again. I understand. So you've got, I don't know, how much free cash roughly? A couple million or something?
Yeah. Well, I mean, we usually look at it as free cash and the.
Stabilization fund. Yeah, right. Okay. So if you didn't use it, it rolls into stabilization.
It doesn't go away. No, it doesn't go to stabilization. It just remains free cash.
Yeah.
And then in a year where you really need it, you just have more to draw on.
Right.
But you're actually looking at three or four years of tough times.
At least two of the next three, after fiscal 23, at least two, maybe three. So.
So you would plan it on a multi-year basis, right?
Mm hmm. Yes. And I should say, you know, right now, we don't have an official free cash number for fiscal 23. But, you know, Kelly is working on that. And I think we're, we're pretty close to, to getting that finalized.
Does the reserve fund balance reflect what you expect to need for various transfer payments and things?
Well, the reserve fund, to a, to a limited degree. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Nathan or Luke, do you have questions or comments?
No, I don't know. Anyone else from my committee join since we started?
Lynn's on, Victor's on.
Oh, great. Okay.
Sorry, was that you, Luke, or Nathan?
Yeah. Yeah, no, it was me, Luke. Yeah, no, I don't, I don't have any. The only other thing, though, is that in a couple of weeks, and I know Lynn's aware of this, so I don't know if she has informed the rest of FinCom or not, but the assessors are gonna, maybe that number already accounts for that. You know, the assessors are looking to bolster that number two position, you know, from, from a standard admin to, to somebody who can really be a true asset in the, not that, not that the admin that just left wasn't, you know, incredibly helpful, especially during the time Melissa was out, but, but really somebody who's really a strong number two. So there's going to be some offset costs with Patriot and whatnot, and they're, and they're pulling some numbers together. But, but the assessors are going to have a, an ask. I think it's going to be above that 184. But it's something that we'll need to strongly consider because I think it makes, you know, Ken will come back and do a presentation and all that. It makes sense in a lot of ways because we can cut costs and we can actually have proper assessments done, which obviously generates more tax revenue. So anyway, just wanted to toss that out there.
And Luke, we, you know, we are aware of that. It's great if they can come forward pretty quickly. Be helpful.
Yeah. Yeah. So Ken, I think is presenting, planning on presenting at the next select board meeting. You know, I can, I can reach out to him. And I know Lynn's been in contact as well. So, you know, maybe just have him come and present to you guys as well. You're still trying to crunch the exact numbers, I think, for the, for the final ask. But, but yeah, I can, I can reach out to Ken, unless he's still sitting in the, in the room. Okay. So, yeah.
So Barney, may I?
Yes, of course.
So Jim, just a quick question. So this, this doesn't include all the warrant articles, right? Or the potential warrant articles?
There are some, it's all the major ones. There's some smaller ones that we haven't seen yet. But we think it covers the bulk of it.
Okay. And so how, how does it, just remind me how it works. Like if, if we make this budget meet our budget target, and maybe this is what you were talking about, about worrying about in 2024, but if, if we use free cash in order And maybe this is what you were talking about, about worrying about, uh, in twenty twenty four, but if, if we use free cash in order to hit that budget target, doesn't that just make the next year that much harder?
Well, that's, uh, the free, the free cash will continue to be replenished through various things, unexpected revenue, um, like we're getting on chapter seventy this year, or unexpended uh, line items at the end of the fiscal year. It tends to replenish itself. Remember, we spent eight hundred thousand for the current year, but we still expect to be in a position to spend as much as a half a million for fiscal twenty three. But, you know, I don't think we need to take a lot of it to reach that two and a half percent goal. And we can still roll forward the majority of it into twenty four and twenty five.
Okay.
Any other questions? Because I think, uh, this is, we can roll right into then looking at the, um, warrant, the warrant articles unless, uh, Wayne, I, I don't know if you want to introduce, uh, you know, a discussion about the annual town meeting or whether, um, whether proceeding to walk through the warrant articles is the, makes sense to do next.
No, I, I think, um, it's, this is actually you, the select board's job. You, you set the warrant, so, um, just go, go ahead. I think, you know, at some later point, we'll probably have a public health discussion on how to, how to run the meeting, but, uh, I'm just here to help. Uh, and answer questions if you have them on any particular warrant articles, if there's some technical issue.
Great. Um, do people have the warrant articles just to follow along in their packets or do you want to, um, put them up? Oh, here, you've already, you're way ahead of me, Tim. Great. So, um, uh, but Tim, do you want to just briefly describe then what we've got here for the first section for the, okay?
The very first, uh, rough draft of the warrant. This is trying to put some language, uh, toward all the, uh, some of the articles that we have on our list of, of a few weeks ago. A lot of the warrant looks like it normally would, the, you know, the preamble and so forth. You'll see in this section, the, the consent agenda is usually articles two through, uh, nine or ten or so, but we've, we've added, uh, possibly articles eleven, twelve, fifteen, twenty eight, thirty and thirty one, and the numbers don't mean anything except that, that's the position they take up in this draft warrant. It can be moved around later, but we've, so we've added possibly another six articles to the consent agenda that, uh, you know, the moderator's suggestion, we expanded that a little bit from, for prior years.
And those are ones that, um, we think will fairly routine and non-contr- right, okay.
We donate to this paid debate and any voter can call any one of them out.
Right.
At the beginning of the meeting, the moderator will pull it from the consent agenda.
Right, okay.
So the first several articles are annual and recurring. Um, articles, the approval of the consent agenda process and then town reports salary of elected officials. All these are in there every year. Uh, the OPEB article, the BRIVAL article, um, chapter ninety authorization.
I have a question about that one.
Revolving funds, yep.
Um, because I understand that we're having increased funds for chapter ninety from the state this year. So I was just wondering if this, this language included the new funds that.
The supplemental chapter ninety?
Yeah.
That, that's going to be dedicated to, um, bridge projects. So it will be coming, that, that's how the program we may be applying to will be funded this year.
Okay.
It's not going to be.
So it's not in this chapter ninety stuff?
We're going to get two hundred and fifty two thousand for road, uh, road work, like we, just like we did last year.
All right, I just, just checking that, thanks.
So article eight's the revolving funds and that there'll be a large table that, uh, is published later on with the various revolving funds. Again, pig access, uh, we recommend that for the consent agenda because that's, uh, again, annual recurring, not controversial. That's how we pay for cable access in the program. Uh, article ten, uh, I think Jim referred to it earlier, the, uh, access road at CCHS. This is the warrant article that's appearing on the Concord Town Meeting warrant, verbatim. And so we've used their language and their summary and they're proposing it as a debt exclusion override, so doing the same here, which means it would be a question on our ballot if the board chooses to uh, go that route, uh, but it's not a requirement. We could simply pay the debt, but, uh, in the past, we excluded the debt from, and I'd be interested if it chimed. The project that we, we do elsewhere.
And on this one, um, Tim, uh, we vote ahead of Concord this year, correct?
I believe we do.
Yeah.
Yep.
So if we don't pass it, then it doesn't go forward in Concord.
Correct.
Okay.
And I, I was confused by the summary since it says this article provides Concord's share of the cost.
Yeah, that, that, that came from their warrant, so.
And we have.
It will be changed to Carwell.
Oh, okay, that's what I want to be sure.
Curbed from their warrant, so.
Okay, there you go.
That's why it says.
All right.
All right, then, uh, article eleven, uh, my new directors recommending the town rescind the borrowing authority that was authorized for the police station project a few years ago, the project that did not happen. Money wasn't borrowed, but the borrowing authorization, authorization remains on our books until it's rescinded. So that's kind of a cleanup. Uh, article.
And can we put a good, I think if something's going to go on the consent agenda, I think we really need to have a summary to, so that people understand by just reading, that Ken could understand by just reading the warrant book. So this one, I think, really needs a summary.
Yeah, yeah, um, which is something we've, yeah, Tim and I and David have already talked about a couple of different times.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, have we, have we moved out? Are, are we still in the consent agreement? Was that parking area consent agreement?
It, it was not, no.
But our, Tim was saying earlier that the ones that are, the new ones that have been added to the consent agenda are various numbers, including, uh, unfortunately you have to go back up, but you know, you can see that.
Double asterisk at the end of the title.
Okay, but that shows that they're now in the consent agenda? Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful, thanks.
Yeah.
Could they be renumbered so that they're all?
Yeah, that's what Tim was saying. We can move them around.
Got it, okay.
Before the final book is done.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, article thirteen, that will be the senior tax deferral program that Ken and Joan spoke to earlier and the details uh, will be fleshed out there. Article fourteen, uh, the board has the authority as cemetery commissioners to recommend the fees at at Green Cemetery, and you had expressed the desire to do that. Town meeting has to ratify more or less your, your new fee structure. So we'll need a fee structure for town meeting to ultimately pass.
Yep.
So who's putting that fee structure together? Luke, is that, um, or?
Well, well, we're. Yeah, we were going to discuss it as a board.
Right, we have, so, um, yeah, so, uh, Luke, is that something you want to sort of or work with Tim and put together some kind of a proposal and then we can put it on? We'll have to do it soon.
Sure, yeah, no, it shouldn't, it shouldn't take long. I mean, Tim pulled all the numbers from a bunch of different towns, um, and what their fees are. And, you know, I don't think we're going to hit those levels, but, um, yeah, it, uh, it should be easy to pull that together.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. Article fifteen would be a proposed consent, uh, agenda article, uh, fire protection easement, uh, from Mel Farm, uh, North Development.
Have, have we seen those plans?
No, and in fact, later on in, uh, Tim's PA report, it says that we'll see it on March twenty second, I think, after the, um, planning board has their open, their hearing.
That's the road layout hearing for Lionsgate.
Oh, that's for Lionsgate, sorry, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
We, we haven't seen this one.
If the board wants to see those, but.
Yeah, I, I have.
Yeah.
He's recommending that.
Yeah, yeah, and then is that, is that something, sorry, sorry, is that something that gets approved by, um, by Brian first? And then, uh, I just, I'm, I'm just not clear on, because I don't, have we ever done one of these before? I mean, I, I understand, is it, is it land that is technically the towns? I, I, I guess I don't fully understand exactly how all those parcels are split up, so. Um, so maybe I can, we don't have to worry about it now. Uh, I can, um.
And isn't there something we do in most, like, didn't we do this in Hanover Hills that there's a sister in there and it's on an easement, it's on somebody's property? I, I may be wrong, but.
The town needs to have access to it, so.
Yeah.
That's what the easement is for, but.
Yeah.
Also can explain that. I presume he talked to Chief Soros about it. I'll confirm that tomorrow.
Okay.
So we should have an agenda item for this one as well.
In, in the future, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, article sixteen is to change the name of the council on aging to council on aging in human services, that required a, the town meeting vote because that's how the town established the council on aging. We talked about perhaps including that in a consent agenda, but we thought people might want to discuss that at town meeting, so we, we don't recommend it as a consent agenda article.
Here's another one that I'd love to have a presentation to the board about. I don't, I mean.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask why, yeah, I was just gonna ask about that. What's, what's the thought process behind the change?
Yeah.
Just making sure it's not overlapping with another group. I don't think it is, but we should chat about it.
Well, I, I, my brief conversation with Joan about this is that, um, council on aging implies they're only dealing with a certain age group. And in fact, they're providing services to, you know, a broader, uh, population than that, uh, but did I hear somebody else on the call?
It's Kim and Joan had explained that to me. She had said the name, it was because their services weren't just confined to, um, seniors.
Yeah, but that's certainly something we can ask Joan to.
But I thought Joan still might be there, but yeah, that was, that was what she had told me. It was not, just not seniors. They were aiding other, um, people, um, of different, you know, younger ages. I think some other towns have moved to, um, that naming as well, but Joan would be the best to elaborate on it.
Or maybe just write us a short memo on it that we could include in a packet and.
Asking her to do the summary, but.
Yeah.
But do we, yes, yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess it would be good just to have them come in and, and, and talk to us about it. It, it seems like that overlaps, to me anyway, with a little bit of border health and just want to make sure that it's, it's clear.
Yeah, I, I mean, and also too, you know, they may be offering services that a lot of people don't know they offer, right? So to get just that information out there is probably a good thing.
For that and the assessment and stuff, is it better to have people present, like Joan give a short presentation at the town?
Town meeting?
Same Joan and, um, Ken maybe on the. Yep. Yeah, well, those, those are not under the consent agenda anyway, so they would have a presentation.
But we also, you know, we've discussed making sure there's a little, um, explanation. So this would, right, none of these right now have any summary except a few of them, so that would be another thing that would be added into the book.
Okay, the next two articles that would accept sections of the general law, uh, to provide for, um, certain, certain things. I think the military pay article, I think, came up in the review of personnel policies last year, if I'm not mistaken. Council recommended, uh, the town accepting that statute to, that describes, uh, how employees called active duty can be, of course, should be compensated. And, uh, I guess likewise another personnel related to, with the article eighteen to provide, uh, that the town would provide up to fifty percent of the health insurance premium for spouses of former employees. Which doesn't occur that often, but when it does, it, uh, it can be a source of, of assistance to a to a spouse. So that was on the, uh.
So is that, is that, again, is this one that we're going to discuss as a board?
We actually did, we did, yeah. And we took a vote on it and at the time, there was also a question as to whether we could include the children um, under that and the state does not allow that.
Yeah, this was following the, um, death of, you know, our assessor. So, yeah, we did that last fall.
Hey, would you present on that?
Sorry?
Would you be presenting on that?
Why don't we, yeah, we, and that's on our agenda for the, um, I think it's for the eighth, isn't it? Who's going to present what? Or maybe it's the following.
Yeah.
So, yeah. We can come back and discuss that.
And article nineteen is the annual transfer article for transfers within the existing, uh, fiscal twenty two budget. Certain line items will, uh, expected to end up in a deficit and others will be running a surplus and there's an attempt to balance out, uh, all those sort of things. So we don't know what the actual transfers will be at this point, but there will be some that, uh, the town's tracking.
Will we know them by the time we publish or are you actually going to put it, put the act?
We, we won't know it till we've prepared the motions, probably, uh.
Ah, okay.
In advance of town meeting.
How will you even know that in town meetings still?
Well, we, we kind of, we take our sort of best guess. And if you're wrong, but. Then the funds, uh, if you transferred too much in our account, the funds would be unspent, would roll over to free cash at the end of the if it's not enough. For the year. Well, then it didn't, there's the opportunity to go see the finance committee in the twenty fifteenth is the drop dead date for.
It doesn't need. So it needs a warrant approval to approve what you know, and if there's other things, you don't need a warrant approval for the rest of it?
If it happens after May first, it's part of a mass general law to do budget transfers from May first to July fifteenth. So it could be something known, you know, now that they want to clear up, you know, before. Um, but anything that, any transfer that's not done, we'd need the selectmen and the FinCom to sign off and the budget transfer could be done after May first.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you. Article twenty would be the proposed.
Which we went over.
Twenty three operating budget, and yes, these are last year's numbers for those that are wondering.
Also, isn't that usually at the front of the packet? That they're calling the budget?
It's, well, it, it's usually around article ten or twelve, I'd say. And. It's not a block.
No, I mean, the, usually the budget, passing the budget at town meeting is early in the meeting. It saves plenty of time for people to drone on about things.
Yeah, yeah, well, the, the, this order is not.
Pass thirty million dollars in like two minutes of deliberation and then argue about some other things.
Right, right. We can, we can move.
Not for quotation, Mary Lynn, please.
So this, this just shows that the, the, uh, chart more or less where we would plug in the recommended numbers.
Yeah.
For the operating budget. Article twenty one is special appropriations. Added to that list, uh, requested the, uh, treasure made to, as a separate warrant article, uh, originally for a, a module in the Munis, uh, accounting system. So we're going to plug that into this article rather than vote it separately.
We better plug it into the system, but that's okay.
Why, why do we keep these things? Why, why don't we just, why don't we just roll the map updates and things like that into the budget? Because they're there every year.
Yeah, I agree.
Why have they been pulled out as a special appropriation? Yeah.
Not sure that the philosophy, maybe so that the funds would actually be spent for those, those items and not absorbed elsewhere in their budget. I, I guess it's been there, you know, I've been here twelve years and it's always been that way.
I know, but.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Not efficient. What do you think, Jim? I agree.
First two could be rolled in their annual. The, the last one is a one-shot deal.
The, the Munis cash module.
But there's always one-shot deals. We'll just throw them in the.
But the other two have been on consistently all the time. They're, they're there.
Yeah.
They're spent, right?
Maybe a change if that's the board's pleasure.
Yeah, seems like we could do that, okay.
Good, good call, Nathan.
I had a question about our personnel study. Uh, we're doing one this year. I guess we've absorbed that in our budget. And then, but we did talk about that we need to not do it like every, you know, five years or fifty years or whatever, that, uh, once we get our next new big one done, we should be doing it on a rolling. uh, once we get our next new big one done, we should be doing it on a rolling basis, you know, a couple of positions at a time or something like that. So I, so I was thinking that, that maybe that would be a line that would go in here, but maybe we should be thinking about putting something like that in our, our, our budget as well.
Where does that wage survey cost? That's in our FY twenty-two budget, right?
Yeah, FY twenty-two budget.
What, I think I recall you saying, Tim, that's typically done every three years or?
Well, we recommend it every five. I think it's been eight since the last.
Okay, so every five.
Twenty years before.
Yeah.
That one. So we, we don't stick to the.
Well, Kate, you're suggesting that it be more, that we take parts of it and do some every year?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we suggested funding it kind of, you know.
Every year to a certain level.
But uh, yeah, we haven't done it that way so far, so. Yeah, and we can fund it this time from the current budget, so.
Okay.
And maybe for the next one.
Probably a discussion for another time, but I had thought maybe that would be, have been something that we would have put in this article if we were going to commit to doing something like that.
In FY twenty-three.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's already underway. Okay.
All right, then uh, Article twenty-two will be the long-term caps recommended projects. These are, these were last year's projects, but Thank you, yep. And the next article would be whatever, you know, facilities is recommending.
Yeah.
I guess the amount would be approximately the same, but we'll, we'll find that list out.
But again, isn't that in the operating budget?
It's not.
No.
No.
That's the capital. Except it's not borrowed, but it's, yeah. Uh, Article twenty-four will be the CPA annual recommendations. We don't know yet what they would be, but uh, this is, this is where they would go. And we're holding uh, a slot for the town, the Governance Task Force, as you know. They suggested, I think, six articles. And I hope, I think I sent a copy of that.
You did.
If you don't have it, I can.
Can we talk about that? Do we have time?
Yeah, well, let's, how many more of these? I'm just wondering if we could, yeah, let's quickly finish these and then go back, cause I think that warrants a lot more discussion. David, thanks, yeah. So, yeah.
For that, the following article will be a home rule petition for the appointed town clerk. And on the warrant before, the board has to bring it back for this uh, annual town meeting, and that's the same language as, as last time. For that, no, they'll share a copy, piggy with you, while the entire warrant for that one in particular. And uh, the two school projects, the next out and, well, I've xed them out of my, they might still be on yours, but those two capital projects are off the warrant.
Twenty-six and twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven and actually twenty-eight and twenty-nine uh, as well.
Yeah, they're crossed out, but twenty-six and twenty-seven now are also crossed out. Okay.
Those are also coming off. Uh, Article thirty would be the acceptance of Lionsgate Road. We'll have a road layout hearing on March twenty-second. The planning board is simultaneously uh, going to send a memo with their recommendation to you that you'll be able to consider at that, that hearing. That it's, the road's been constructed as uh, according to plan and that there are no deficiencies uh, remaining. I mean, sometimes roads are not quite done and, and it's a premature ask from the developer and, and that uh, sometimes holds, holds things up, but we'll see how that goes. And I think the final article we had on uh, on there would be, we found out last year, we've got to do the entire wage and salary chart. And all the positions each and every year on the town meeting warrant, and that's uh, we have, this is the list of the positions and then we have a new wage chart that would have to be approved by town. Once we know the COLA, we can do a new wage chart to go in that.
So you throw a wage chart in there, somebody could object and say, well, why is the library level treated? I mean, what do you do with that when people, if somebody challenges it, like challenges a number?
I'm really not sure, cause I mean, we didn't, we didn't have it voted on till last year for the first time.
Why do we have to vote on?
Required, required state law.
So, so somebody raises their hand and says, well, I see the librarian is three, ten, level something or other, you know, why is she getting paid that and this other? How do you respond to that in real time in a meeting?
That's for our town moderator to handle. No, let's, let's come back to that kind of question, maybe at another time, so we can go back and discuss the. Yeah.
Put on the warrant, you gotta think about what kind of questions.
Yep, yeah, good point.
And the second part of the warrant is the town election warrant.
Right.
Should be signed, signing later on this evening, a notice for the town clerk for that.
And then the questions, these are last year's questions on the ballot.
Well, they, they, they would have been this, the first one will be for this year, cause it's, it's to pay for the town share of the, the bond issued for the.
Okay, right.
Access sort of the high school. And then uh, I, I guess I was assuming that the two school projects, if they went forward, would be that exclusions as well, but those, those can also.
Question two would take, come off. And three, two and three. And then we just discussed, what did we say was gonna have to go to the ballot, uh, if it was approved? Um, was that the uh?
The, the, the question one.
No, 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 uh, in the earlier conversation.
Debt exclusion.
Pardon?
Debt exclusion. Debt exclusion, you'd have to.
I heard you, yeah.
Well, that, that is what uh, number one is.
That's number one.
Debt for the access road, the town share of the access road.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Good.
That uh, that's the draft warrant. We expect to have it firmed up for next time when you'll be
Yeah.
Closing the door on all new, uh, no one can raise anything uh, at this point of, new, unless, you know, I mean, we still have the town governance.
Yeah, so let's.
Kind of hanging in the balance.
So let's scroll on down. If you keep going past um, the last page and you get to the warrant topics from the Governance Task Force starts off with warrant topics for potential inclusion into the draft warrant for twenty-twenty-two annual town meeting. Warrant article number one is about uh, the authority of the town administrator and the boards. You know, if we just review these, warrant article two is about uh, creating having a general bylaw to create a human resources director that's not the town administrator appointed by the select board. And with some very specific um, require, or requirements, I guess, for what they would cover. And then Article three is already in the warrant. That's about changing the town clerk to being an appointed position, so we don't really have to discuss their warrant article three. And then word, Article four is uh, sort of a change in how we would put together the annual town budget. Uh, and then Article five is about town meetings and the town warrant book. Um, and the last one is about um, annual report uh, on the progress of the implementation of these recommendations. I, uh, I, I know that um, several of us have been in discussion about um, these warrant articles and um, trying to figure out what, what is really appropriate to have on a town meeting warrant. Um, and I I've had some discussion with the chair of the Governance Task Force. Uh, and I know that our legal counsel uh, has also had discussion with um, the chair and uh, has suggests, indicated that the, a bylaw is not necessarily the needed or, or appropriate, but the, my understanding from the task force and this, this list here come is the latest list that we received from the chair of the task force on uh, Monday, right? Just yesterday, I believe that came in, so um, they want to put these items on the town warrant at our town meeting this spring. So I'm opening, I guess I'll open up the conversation to see what other folks think about uh, doing so and if there are proposals about how we um, try to work this out with the town governance task force in such a way that we um, have things that make sense to go on the uh, town meeting agenda uh, or not.
So did Harrington, these things seem ridiculous for warrant articles, in my opinion. Um, did Harrington weigh in like not appropriate or okay if you want, but we don't recommend, I mean?
He's.
This is not a, it's not appropriate.
My understanding, well, Tim, maybe you know better. I had a conversation with Tom last week um, before the last meetings of the Governance Task Force where, where they were voting on what they wanted to put forward and I know that he
He, he expressed his, his reservations. He got the same list that's in front of you. And he, he said, you know, some of these are not warrant articles and, and we were told by the chair that we, we want it to be a warrant article anyway.
Well, you know, the, the.
Right.
It doesn't, they don't know.
Takes a direction from this board.
Right.
Not a committee.
Well, I mean, we probably need to engage, you know, women in this, but I, they have freedom to come up with their recommendations as they see fit. But they don't have freedom to say change the rules of town meeting. Once you establish that, that's like, okay, from now on, we need a warrant article when, you know, Tim wants to hire another, you know, clerk and the, not a clerk, but you know, just, it, it's dangerous precedent to kind of. They said before, like they want a stronger town administrator, yet they're asking for like a warrant article to hire a person. It's completely inappropriate, in my opinion, and I don't think they have the right to de, you know, they should make their recommendations. It does, they don't get the right to say what should and shouldn't be a warrant article. I think that's.
Well, they could, they would certainly within their purview to suggest a warrant article, but as, as Tim's pointing out, it's our decision about what or what, what does and doesn't go on. And so I, I would like to figure out a way to um, work this out with the Governance Task Force rather than to end up at loggerheads. So um, I wonder, Wayne, do you have uh, any insight for us on how we try to um, work this through?
Well, you know, certainly I, I'm, I'm not in, in a position, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the task, task force. Uh, as I think you, you alluded to, um, the task force reports to town meeting was appointed, uh, you know, under the authority of town meeting, not, doesn't report to the select board. However, um, the select board decides um, what goes on the warrant. Um, and obviously just as um, you know, as you've had in prior years, either with citizens petitions or in the case of uh, warrant articles suggested by various uh, other boards or committees. Um, there may be differing opinions about whether something is appropriate for town meeting or, or not. And then ultimately the select board needs to decide, either we're not going to let it on or we're going to say, well, we may not like it as a policy matter, but we'll let the town decide. Um, and you know, those, those decisions have gone both ways in the past, so it'll be up to you again. I do think um, they're speaking personally, um, the chair's suggestion of trying to um, work with the, with the Governance Task Force and come to some resolution that makes sense to everyone. Um, I think that in general, that's, that's a good approach to try to take. That's the, the from my perspective, I think most citizens want town government to work and figure things out. And so if you can uh, if whatever gets brought to town meeting uh, has broader support rather than division, I think generally that's a, a good thing. Um, but if there are divided opinions, well, that's also where town meeting is uh, has the function of working things out and actually making decisions. I'm sorry, can't, is someone else speaking? I can't hear.
Sorry, somehow my mic got turned off. Um, thanks, Wayne. I, just a quick question about the uh, charge to this task force um, that you, you appointed. Um, they are providing a report on their findings and recommendations. And is that report supposed to be presented at town meeting or somehow provided to people at town meeting? Or is that report just a separate document that is going to be, I'm not sure where it ends up or who, who receives it?
The report was supposed to be, is supposed to be published uh, at least six weeks before town meeting. So the concept was that it is a document that gets published to the, um, to the town so to speak. Um, there's um, and, and the language of the motion that was passed said that the report could include items that didn't necessarily require a town meeting vote. If in the course of their deliberations, they uncovered something that they had, they thought they had a recommendation um, that could be acted on outside of town meeting, didn't require town meeting approval, they could certainly toss that into the report for the benefit of the town. Um, so the actual way that action is taken on their recommendations um, there's either two ways of doing it. Either uh, it is through a, a town meeting vote, through a warrant article. Um, or um, you know, if there was something that the select board says, yes, that's a good idea. We have the power to um, move forward on our own. Um, so we're, you know, we're just gonna vote it and make it so, um, you know, that, that is also a possibility. But it, you know, it really depends on the content of the specific change uh, that they're recommending.
And um, as far as the, the sort of charge to the task force, is there anything that would uh, prohibit or, or make it difficult to, for them to suggest that some of these uh, proposals may need more time to be um, talked through and figure out what exactly the, the action step would be and so we would, or we would suggest they take weight on some of these, or potentially all of them until a fall town meeting. So that there'd be more time really for the task force and the select board and legal counsel to really talk through and come up with um, more uh, items that are agreed to by a broader uh, group.
Well, um, you know, at, at the moment, the um, the charge to them from last year's town meeting was deliver a report um, for the next town meeting.
Okay.
Um, and um, now, if, if you thought more time was, was needed, I I would have to think about that. I, I, I don't, I don't want to express any, any opinion without.
There's two different things going on here. There's a question if they need more time, which if they don't need more time, they don't. I think the main issue to me, which you articulated better than I did, Wayne, is they produce a report with recommendations, does not, again, does not, I don't remember anywhere in the charge that they had to come up with warrant articles.
No, it is. They were, they were, the recommendations are to include proposed warrant articles. That's what they, they were, they were, the, the committee was supposed to come up with things that would be actionable. So the report was to include recommended warrant articles.
Yeah. Wayne, I think it would be very helpful if you would uh, think about that question of uh, waiting till a subsequent town meeting, because um, you know, as, as we, as we structured it, as town meeting structured it, it was meant to be an independent body and they have certainly worked very independently. Um, I think one of the things that I can see in these articles and also it's, it's uh, clearly come up with various staff members and other boards that the, some of the suggestions here indicate um, not as, not as full an understanding of how things at town hall. not as, not as full an understanding of how things at town hall actually work and what we already have in place. So for example, the personnel policies that have already been reviewed and changed and voted on and adopted by the select board last spring. There's no sort of recognition of that in here, that there's some things that are already in place. And so it just, to me, really suggests that now that they've, they've, they've really gotten to the heart of what they think needs to be changed, there should be the opportunity to understand what currently is the practice and what is in place already in terms of the way the town governance works. So that there's not, you know, there's not either duplication or unnecessary bylaws to create something that already exists. So between that and, and the fact that the, the sort of legal language is not, has not been developed into a clear, kind of a warrant article that, that is able to be fairly easily understood and described for a town meeting to adopt. You know, I can see a real benefit on, on all sides to postponing, putting these, having a process, a time for more discussion and development. Again, not trying to step on any toes or, or get, you know, not, not trying to take over or anything like that, but just to have more understanding about what currently exists and so that we're not spending a lot of time on something that's unnecessary. So having that opportunity over the next four or five months to do that, I think would be really helpful.
Well, certainly all I can suggest is perhaps the sooner you speak with the chair of the task force and figure out a path forward, the better.
Well, I, I have been doing that and I will continue to do that. But Wayne, I would like to, since you were the person who established the, the committee and, and were, you know, responsible for implementing or orienting them, you know, to the charge, it would be very helpful to also understand whether you think putting these on a future town meeting would fit within the, within the charge to the committee. So.
Yeah, yes. Well, okay, yeah. And, and quite frankly, I, I don't, since, since there are very few things other than simply running the meeting that the town moderator has to do and the fact that you gave me the appointment authority, the special committee was, was something new, at least in my, in my tenure. Quite honestly, I'm not, I'm not fully confident that I understand the full legal contours of what my authority is here. So if maybe I'll, I'll, I'll think it through and I'll, I'll talk through with town council and I will try to be as helpful as I can.
That would be great, Wayne. Thank you very much. Other comments from board members? Yeah.
This is not so much a comment as a question, just to clarify what our issue is.
Okay.
I don't think we're saying we have issues with any of, necessarily have issues with any of these particular recommendations, let's say. I think is our, is our issue whether the recommendations should necessarily be or not be in the form of a warrant article?
Correct for, correct for me.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Correct for me. I don't know, Nathan or Luke, if you would share that or see it differently.
Yeah, I just, this is Nathan. I think, I think it's odd to have a warrant article that's creating a position. And also just a question for Jim, is this position in the budget?
Well, it is at the moment.
Want to come speak to the mic, Jim? Thanks. The position you're talking about is the human resources director?
Which I mentioned earlier in the budget discussion, we did, we have added this back into the proposed budget.
Assistant town administrator, basically, that.
Right.
Additional position, yep.
So that, so it's not an assistant town administrator and a human resources director, it's, it's, it's one role?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Just for a moment, we haven't, as a committee, formally taken any votes about anything, but I can say that Article Four would be strongly opposed as written by our committee. It relegates the role of the finance committee to a secondary status. I was contacted by someone from the governance committee about this. And that person confirmed that it, it reflects dissatisfaction with the finance committee.
I mean, it's really hard to look at these articles without seeing like the, the reasoning behind it.
Right.
The example I was given seemed to reflect a mistaken understanding of what her role is. So I've been invited to come to their meeting Thursday. And I hope that's meant to be just an opportunity to say what the process actually is, what our role actually is, and, and see where it goes from there.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
So I guess we're back to that same conundrum that I'm confused about. Why wouldn't they provide recommendations and task the select board must take those recommendations up and deliberate them as compared with, I mean, the, the notion of taking it to the voters directly does, I mean, completely circum, not just finance, but select board, it just circumvents a process that's working. I, I agree that they should make recommendations. And I agree that the select board must take those recommendations up, not dismiss them out of hand. No, no, we're not doing that. But the process of going straight to the voter on these things, some of which are somewhat arcane, like the one that Jim is mentioning, that it just doesn't seem appropriate. It doesn't seem like the right process. How do we not do that?
Comments? Luke, do you have anything you want to raise or add or suggestions about how to move forward?
No, I mean, I just, you know, I, I kind of raised this all last year, right? You know, it, it's our responsibility to do this. And, and, you know, I thought we actually stated that we wanted them to bring bylaws to town, or bylaws, warrant articles to town meeting. You know, it didn't make sense at the time then. I still don't think it really makes sense. I think as a recommendation or a, a committee to make recommendations to the board that we can thoroughly vet is what makes sense, you know, it, it's just, it's another, another bit of process that, you know, you know, they were going to be more of our ears to the ground. But, but then it got, I don't know. It just turned into this whole thing about, you know, they would create warrant articles and they would put them on and they didn't need our approval and, which technically nobody needs our approval, right? You just get your votes and, you know, you, you get your petition signed and you can put one on. But again, it's like, you know, we, we should be working together on this and, and it just creates confusion at the end. So, I don't know. I, I like them as a recommendation group, but.
What, what is the official, I mean, what is the official thing? Because it says, it's on the website, it says make recommendations and deliver a report to annual town meeting. It doesn't say deliver a warrant article.
Yeah, I think the, the idea of the warrant articles was if, let's say, the recommendation were to change our charter to a town manager from town administrator, that would require legislative decision on the part of the town. And that that would be the sort of thing that would have gone or changing the town clerk from an appointed, from a elected to appointed position. That has to go on the town warrant. But some of these others, those are recommendations. I don't think they require a warrant.
Yeah, you know, my sense is the, the concern is, and again, I haven't talked to large numbers on the committee. I've talked to a couple of people on the committee. I think what, what is being expressed in these warrant articles is the desire to make sure that these things are done. And instead of, you know, really thinking about each one and what, what, what are a variety of ways you can ensure that these get done, right? And thinking about, okay, how could we, you know, require that the select board make sure, you know, X functions are, are taken care of at town hall or, or whatever it could be. I think instead, because of the whole sense of trying to be independent and to not be, not, you know, and, and the, the way it was set up is to go right back to the, the town. That's why it's coming forward this way. So I think my own feeling is that if, if someone else on the select board, working with me, would be willing to meet with the governance task force, or maybe we meet with the chair and vice chair. I'm not quite sure how we do that, right? But to start a conversation right now that tries to figure out how can we work together to try to affect some of the things that they'd like changed and figure out the best way to do that. And I know time is, is short for things that might go on the, on the town meeting warrant. But that would be my suggestion about just even starting those initial conversations and see where we are two weeks from now when we come back together as a select board. What others think about that approach?
I think so.
Yep.
All right, so who, Nathan, who wants to, who's willing to step up with me to engage?
I am. I hope, I promise to hold my temper.
Okay, you, you spoke very softly, David, uncharacteristically, but.
I think it's appropriate for chair and vice chair, if you're going to meet with the chair and vice chair. Unless, if somebody else has a die, I, I take, this is pretty important to me.
Yeah.
I mean, process is really important. And we can't, you know, we're seeing it, I don't, I don't want to make this broader than it is, but we see in governments around the country, people taking sort of direct control. I want directly to control the election. It's not appropriate if it's working, you know, there is ways we need to do these things. And I, I just don't think that's the right way to go about it. Now, if they are insistent they have a mandate, okay, but they should understand, this was always my concern, that I think it was by design that they picked people who weren't from inside.
Right.
But the risk of it is then you also lose legacy process knowledge. They, they need to understand that.
Yeah. Luke and Kate and Nathan, are you comfortable with me and David trying to engage with the chair and vice chair and see where we, and, and see where we go from there?
Sure.
Okay. All right, we'll give that a try. Meanwhile, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Good job.
Wayne, what time is it? Nine twenty-four? What's going on? I'm looking at the wrong one. Nine twenty-four. All right, yeah, so we're past our time to talk about the TA search, so let's, let's move to that. Wayne, can we wait until our meeting on the eighth to hear more about the other things you said you'd like to discuss about town meeting?
Oh, absolutely. I, I, when I said later, I, I, I meant a, a subsequent meeting. I didn't, didn't mean tonight.
Great. Thank you, Wayne, and thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, so I believe is John Ripton.
John Petron, Bernie Lynch, Sharon Flaherty.
Oh, great, we have the whole gang. Hello, hello.
Hello.
Thank you for joining us again. Good to see you all. And my apologies for keeping you waiting for a little bit. So what we, we have on our agenda tonight is to just an update regarding the town administrator search. A discussion about what the sort of key characteristics qualities that we as a select board would like to, that we think are sort of the high priorities for the permanent town administrator. And then if we have time, we can discuss the composition of the screening committee. So with that, I don't, Tim, do you want me to give an update? Do you want to? Or John, do you want to give a short update on kind of where we are at this point? Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Yeah, so John, if you're comfortable with that, why don't you as our point person, tell us, you know, where you are in the process of, for the, for the permanent town administrator for the moment.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to recognize we have Bernie Lynch with us, the principal of the firm. We have Sharon Flaherty and Massey Birmingham. So we're all here tonight with you, you know, to talk and to observe. So the process, we, we kicked off the process about a week and a half ago. I was in town last week with Tim, met with a few department heads, a meeting with some more on Thursday. Just to get a flavor from department heads of character, you know, again, we ask the questions, what are the characteristics you're seeking in the, the new person coming in? What are some of the projects in town? And then we ask of the board as well, some of the goals, you know, that the board has, you know, to move forward with. So that we can explain this to the candidates as we move forward. I think I, I said to you, Bonnie, I, I call myself an ombudsman here. You know, the role is for us to be able to talk to candidates coming in and make sure they understand some of the issues of the town and some of the priorities. And also get a good understanding whether it's a good fit, because it needs to be a fit between, you know, who you choose in the end and the town. So that's what we try to do, you know, get that together. So we're set up to move forward. We're set up for Thursday night to, to talk to four candidates for the interim. So we've worked on that issue as well. And so tonight, I believe you want to talk about process for moving forward with the actual search piece. And we can talk about, you know, do you want to do it individually or do you wish to talk about, again, the characteristics, the projects, the goals, you know, from the board perspective, so that we can put that into a position statement. So we do create a full position statement and we try to highlight all these things in it.
Yeah. So, yeah, so for all of us, just to remember when Paradigm first came to us, you know, they showed us a sample of a, of a town profile as well as the job description for that particular town. And so that's the, that's what John and his team are working on right now is getting to the point where they can present that town profile to us with also the particular skills or needs or goals that we have as a town to reform the.
We can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I keep accidentally doing that. Sorry. So what I think, given the time that we have this evening, I think would be great to start with just hearing from each member of the board about what you think the sort of key, you know, qualities, skills, experiences you think we should be looking for, for the permanent town administrator, thinking about not just the next year, but really going forward, you know, five, 10 years. What is it? What are those particular skills and qualifications or characteristics that we're looking for? Who would like to, I know Kate, you've got some notes here. Would you like to start us off?
Sure, why not?
And let me just say one thing that also, I, this is in no way meant to preempt any member of the board having a one-on-one conversation with John. So, you know, that could follow if, if, if any of you were interested in a follow-up conversation where you can share more of your thoughts. Please just let Tim know and he can communicate that with John and you can set something up.
So I, I wrote a list of what I thought would be some good qualities. One is somebody that's proactive and forward-looking, with good managerial skills, strong and assertive leadership skills. Someone that would be, certainly would have good command of all the applicable statutes that we need to keep up with and that would be able and willing to advise on best practices at our meetings. An appreciation of the royal, role of IT in effective government and communications and outreaches to our, our residents who are, are consumers and somebody with a strong sense of ethics.
Okay, great. That's a great start. Some very great characteristics you've listed there.
There's Nathan or Luke, you want to chime in? There's Nathan or Luke, you want to chime in?
I think that that's, I agree with Kate's list there.
I'd add to that, that sort of as part of the kind of, sort of leadership ability, someone who is, is, or understands the importance of building relationships with the various staff members who work for him or her, and that that those relationships are both one-on-one relationships, but they're also group relationships, and that the town administrator really sets the tone for the cul, the culture of, particularly in a small town like ours. And so we've, you know, we're, we have a history, partly because of what a small town we are and our founding, you know, it's a small rural community where, you know, individuals just stepped up and did various parts of town work, you know, initially without being paid. You know, it's kind of evolved over time, but we are at a point now where we need to sort of recognize and take advantage of the additional sort of technology and resources and understanding that we, we have to, to really increase our capacity as a town hall staff without spending a lot of additional funds to have everybody both feel really supported and, but also understand that their expectations and they're held accountable for their responsibilities, and that there's a fair and consistent process for staff evaluations and staff development. That I think that's a very important aspect of, of managing a team of people, particularly in a small town like ours.
Okay. What is some of the, so does that take care of the characteristics issue? I don't know if anybody else had any comments on, on some of those?
I have a couple.
Yeah, David.
So I think to amalgamate what Kate called managerial skills and Barney called relationship skills and also the evaluation comes up. Somebody is HR oriented, right? So that in no way undercuts that we will presumably hire an ATA, who will be the formal lead. I think running this size of an organization and in the complexity that Barney alluded to, HR skills are very important. A piece of that, you know, they overlap with other things, is I would call it communication skills, just generally.
Yeah.
Not just to the employees, of course, but to the town, to the select board, to other boards, to, you know, people like that. I think service-oriented, because, you know, it is a service organization through the citizens of the town. I, you know, you're not going to get everything, but I would like the person to be data-driven and, you know, have good analytical capability, even though sometimes that runs counter to being sort of people skills. I mean, you know, and creative, which is, I think, also what Barney was talking about, to be able to, you know, stretch a dollar, right? So you have to be creative in the way you approach things. So that's my, those are my hands.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 John, I was going to ask you to ask your follow-up question.
Okay, so, so what are some of the goals you're seeking from the person coming into the position? What are some of the, you know, projects you'd like this person to tackle? I'm hearing HR has been a discussion, you know, moving forward. You've certainly got the discussions going around, you know, town government and a person, you know, who is going to need to be a part of, you know, the, the implementation of whatever is decided moving forward. But what are some of the goals, you know, you're seeking as a board?
Nathan, do you, you and Luke want to, you or Luke want to start off on that one? What, sort of what are the priority goals that, that you might see for the town administrator and the town going forward?
I guess I would throw out one, which is, you know, personnel-related. You know, just, you know, continuing the, the work about reviews, structure, you know, whatever comes out from the governance task force. You know. If, if, if the structure has changed and, and, you know, there's, there's additional responsibility there, you know, that's going to, that's going to need to be a very large priority in the first year. The strong staff management skills, I think, you know, and, and leadership skills are going to be important and going to be a very big priority.
Great.
Yeah, actually, just to add to Nathan's piece, too, hiring processes. You know, like we're doing a pretty extensive process for, for the administrator position. That typically doesn't happen. You know, it's, they're usually, you know, not this large scale, or much smaller scale, you know, smaller netcast. You know, we don't always get candidates for some of the positions that, that we post. You know, and even just making sure that we're doing it properly, you know, in accordance with how a municipality should be running a search. So, so things like that as well. So, yeah, just really, there's, there's a big kind of HR component to all of this. And, yeah, just, you know, and, and somebody who is kind of thicker skin, you know? I mean, it was, it was not, you know, it was willing to come in and, you know, have the hard conversations and shake things up a bit, you know? I mean, I think, you know, change is going to be hard. You know, people get comfortable, people get entrenched. And, you know, anytime a new kind of head comes in, you know, as Nathan said, I think it was Nathan, you know, the, the, you know, they have to be personable, they have to be able to get along with folks, right? But, but in addition to that, you know, they got to be able to kind of express their authority. So, you know, I just think those sorts of things are important, in addition to what everybody else had.
Great, thank you.
Couple of things I'd mention. One is actually an exterior priority, and that's the master plan that is about to be adopted over the next month or two. And it contains a lot of very specific recommendations with responsibility being assigned to a variety of different boards, or in some cases, staff people. And so the, the select board, I think ultimately, maybe working with the planning board will, will be kind of responsible for, you know, trying to move those actions forward. But the town administrator will play a really important role in helping do that. So somebody that is ready to, to participate in that process of making the master plan a reality and not just a study that sits on the shelf, I think will really be very important for our town. The other thing I wanted to mention in terms of, maybe, I don't know if it's, it's, well, maybe more characteristics or has more to do with the pool is, and I mentioned this to you on the phone, John, but I just want to say it publicly, which is, I would really like to see the pool of people who submit resumes include some women as well as men. I know it's more typically a job that white men hold in the Commonwealth, but I'd really like to see us, see, see the firm reach out and see if we can have, be able to consider some sort of candidates that are not, maybe don't fit the standard mold. And similarly with candidates of color. And again, if that means going out of the traditional networks or, you know, places that you would normally do outreach, I'd really like to see that happen.
Okay, I'll add to that. I want to kind of echo what Luke and Nathan were saying about the HR which is important. For me also, IT and the nurturing of, you know, using, you know, getting support for IT. But my, my pet project and my pet goal is having more amalgamation of services that are shared by the schools and the town, and especially the municipal facilities. So I'd like to see somebody that can work well with the school side and foster some of those connections.
Okay, good points. Any other points on that? So some of the things we've been hearing on hard projects, you know, working with Tim and some of the department heads, and again, you know, we'll, we'll talk about more this week, is, you know, we've been hearing about facilities. So maybe at a point of trying to, you know, do it more. So the need for, you know, facility review, we understand you've, you know, you're starting to tackle that, you know, with, with, you know, with the town committee. And also the issue of the police and fire stations, you know, moving forward, the, you know, the status of, you know, where the town is going to go, you know, with that facility. And I didn't tour the fire station, or I didn't tour the police station yet, but I toured the fire station. And certainly, you know, you know, got to feel, you know, some great equipment, and the chief really has a great handle on things. But, you know, the quarters are a little tight, you know, in there. I think I had to suck in my stomach once or twice to get down, you know, some of, some of the aisles there. But, so we got some of that as hard projects. If there's any other hard projects that, you know, we can certainly include. And also the documents. So, you know, I'm glad you mentioned the, the master plan. So what we like to do in that position statement is have hyperlinks to various documents. So we'll collect those documents, you know, where we can hyperlink them to, you know, it's a location either on your website or made available, so that candidates can do their research, you know, in some of these documents. So we will address that, you know, as part of the position statement. Bernie, anything you want to add to this at this point?
No, I, I think nothing, the only, I guess I want to point out is just sort of a response to the issue of diversity. I, I couldn't agree more. And it's, I have to say that it is a priority that we have to, to build as much of a diverse pool as possible. And we're very proud of the fact that, I think the most recent numbers, and I haven't updated these recently, but if they have, if, if anything, they've improved. I think we have had women in our group of finalists in roughly 75% to 80% of our searches, with women being selected in, as, as the, you know, the successful candidate in probably a third to, you know, 33% to 40% of our, of our searches. And we've had, also had quite a bit of success in the last couple of years with bringing people of color into the pool as well. So it is something that we take very, very seriously with our, with our searches. And so I'm pleased to hear that the, the town is looking for that as well, because we think it's, we think it really is incumbent upon communities to address that issue. So very happy with that.
I just want to point out as well that, you know, talking with Bonnie, that you'll be using a screening committee. And I just want to make sure you understand that the screening committee will see every candidate that comes in. So we don't withhold, you know, any applications. So every application we receive will be put before the screening committee and discussed with the screening committee at that, at that time. But we'll do our best to make sure that we attempt to recruit and that we get the, the notice out to as many groups as we can to bring in the candidates.
Yeah, and that's probably a good segue. If, if others are ready to discuss the, the sort of composition of a screening committee for Carlisle Town Administrator, I, I'm going to move ahead on that unless somebody else does a last comment. Alrighty, let's do that then. So I, I sent out just a, something for all of us to think about in terms of just a first cut at what the, what the makeup of a screening committee might be for the town of Carlisle. And what I suggested there, and I think John might prefer that we didn't have quite as many slots that, that I, that we're being, that we're considering at the moment. But we'll, we'll see where we end up, John, on this. But the current, my, my thought was that we have two department heads, one of whom would have been on the staff for a relatively longer time, and another one who would be a newer person. But both department heads, a representative from the finance committee, a representative from the school community, and then one other board chair, not a select board member, but one of the other board chairs, and then two community members. And as I, well, I noted in my email to all of you that there is an individual, you know, who we've all worked with in the past in terms of our goal setting, that came forward and offered to be a community member on the screening committee. I won't name names just because we're not at that point, but. And then one suggestion came up as possibly somebody representing public safety for the town. And then, then I think it's an open question in my mind about whether or not we have a member of the select board on the screening committee. And were we to think that's a good idea, then I would put myself forward to do that. You know, and a suggestion, though, that I did receive was another way to go about that is not have a member of the select board of the screening committee, but instead have, you know, maybe we designate two people to be the liaisons in a sense to the screening committee, so that they're periodically getting updates or checking in with the screening committee just to make sure, you know, they're moving forward in a way that's consistent with what we're thinking that, you know, we were looking for. So we don't have to decide this tonight, but I wanted to open up the discussion to see what we think about a screening committee. And the timeline for this is, we, John, correct me if I'm wrong about this, but we'd ideally like to have this group appointed by the select board probably sometime early April. Is that sound about right, John?
That would be the latest, you know, if you could do late March, you know, that, that way we have time to do orientation.
Okay, so late March. So we have a March 22nd select board meeting, and that could be.
That'd be good.
When we shoot. So, so if we can discuss for a little bit the makeup of the screening committee, and then I think we can, we can revisit that. But in the meantime, I think what I would do is do a little outreach to determine interest, understanding that, you know, John has made it very clear, and I'm in complete agreement with this, that availability is very important. Somebody that says they would like to be on the committee needs to be clear that they're making a commitment to participate fully, that whoever's on that screening committee has to be absolutely committed to confidentiality, and nothing, none of the other candidates that are considered can ever be mentioned outside of that screening committee. And I think those are the two key qualities, right, John?
Yes, I think those are the key ones, you know, maintaining confidentiality and then being available and being part of the team player, because if you're going to have eight or nine people at the table, you know, it's, you know, that's a lot of folks for discussion purposes, and we need to move through it, you know?
Oh, I, I know. And the final thing was to be very clear that their role is to screen, not to.
And not choose, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And just as a note, Madam Chair, I'll keep the board advised as to where the screening committee is, you know, on meetings. Just let you know. Uh, so I'll, you know, I'll provide periodic updates to you or to the whole board, if you wish, as to the status, you know, of the committee, um, you know, moving forwards that, uh, we can, because we'll need to know to meet with you, you know, shortly thereafter, once they're done, um, to move forward with the interview process.
Yeah, okay. Uh, yeah, comments?
Well, I have a question for John actually, because it sounded like, um, John would prefer or recommends a different number of people on the staff, on the, so John, could you tell us what you would recommend? And why?
We, we like to work with, you know, with no more than seven, um, you know, again, um, many committees are five members. The, um, the issue comes down to really, um, having enough, you know, uh, because you, you put a candidate in a room asking questions and it gets to be, uh, you know, a few folks around the discussion table. Usually you can be well represented with the five, seven is fine too, you know, we're not, you know, uh, we'll work, you know, usually between five and seven, but getting scheduling down. I just, I was in a town, um, uh, two weeks ago, we couldn't get schedules down for four weeks. That added, you know, tremendously to the time schedule because especially when you got, uh, committee members who are on other committees, well now, if they're from another committee that meets on Tuesdays, we can't do Tuesdays. We can't do Thursdays for another member and it just very quickly, you know, takes days off the calendar, you know, as you move forward. So that's, that's really the biggest, you know, uh, points, you know, we would make. But again, we'll work with whoever you put, you know, um, you know, together as a committee, um, and, uh, move forward.
Could you argue the opposite, John, that if you had a larger committee and, you know, we're going to schedule and if you can make it, you make it and if you can't, you can't. Whereas if you have a smaller committee, it's very important that everybody be attending. And if you have eight, I'm not necessarily advocating, but if you had eight, you know, you'd like to have five. As long as five can make it, you have your meeting.
That's not the way it works.
No, the, 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 the issue is that, uh, uh, the, the, the committee will probably meet, uh, three or four times, you know, meet to select the candidates, a couple of interviews, a couple of days of interviews and then the, uh, perhaps a decision. Many communities, uh, it's done in three meetings. And so if, if someone can't make one meeting, they really can't, uh, be sitting in judgment to choose, um, the, you know, maybe they can skip the choosing of the candidates, uh, but then if they miss one meeting where they're, uh, actually doing the interviews, it becomes very difficult then for them to participate in the selection of the finalists. And it, it is just very awkward to have, uh, a decision made to, and we've certainly had that happen. We've had that happen where someone says, look, go on without me, uh, but it, it does create some awkwardness, um, for the group.
And, and that's rare. So in essence, we're always having to make sure we can get the three or four dates on the nights where everybody is available. And, and that's, that's the issue.
Yeah, and you know, when you
Go ahead, Bernie, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, as John said, it's, it, it becomes challenging. When, you know, when you think about it, oh, you really only have, if, if particularly if the group is meeting at night, you only have four nights a week, right? People don't meet, generally people don't meet on Fridays. Uh, although certainly we've done that, we've met on Sundays, uh, from time to time, uh, and certainly Saturdays. But, um, you know, if it's, it's four nights, really it's four nights a week. And if there's, um, if you have members from, uh, different committees, different boards, uh, that becomes challenging. Uh, people have business and family commitments. Um, and then the, the other issue I would just say is that, you know, you really want this, these, uh, interviews to be, uh, for lack of a better term, somewhat intimate in terms of being able to delve into people's, um, stories, people's experiences, uh, and when it becomes a, a large group gathering of, uh, you know, you kind of lose some of that. I mean, I think, I, I think the number that I heard was eight. Certainly eight isn't the end of the world, uh, but the more controlled it is for scheduling and to have that, uh, smaller group discussions that you, you want to be able to have, uh, we, we find that, that we find that that has been more effective.
Thanks, that's, that's helpful input. Yeah, go ahead, Nathan.
But Barney, I guess I would just say, if I were to cut the list that you gave here, I would say it's two department heads, um, one board chair, one member of the community and one select board member.
And so not somebody particularly representing the schools?
Just one, one chair of something, of, of one of the other boards. That's, that's correct. Um, it, it reports to us. So, I mean, I think, you know, as, you know, I think that it's important that, that, that we have representation there, um, and, uh, I think we're, you know, we, we just had a discussion where we're, we're dealing with something where we kind of delegated something and, and, you know, I think, I think it's important that, you know, w- w- we either do that or we have to have to, you know, have the two liaison things that, that you mentioned. But I think it's, would be good to have somebody actually involved in the process. I think, you know, you might think, well, then, you know, they're involved in the process and then they're, and then they're selecting. I think that's a good thing, um, because we can, we can get information from, it, it's good for that person to be able to speak up and, and talk about the, what was going on during the interviews.
Okay. Luke, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I was thinking we actually need at least, well, we need at least one select board. I was thinking two. You know, and I was thinking FinCom rep, yeah, I don't, I don't know why we'd need somebody from the school. Especially because I didn't realize initially that there were going to be interviews. But if there are going to be interviews, you got to have people who can answer questions, right? And when a candidate asks a question, you know, and everybody around the table going, oh, oh, we don't know. That's not, we're not involved in it, right? So, uh, you know, I, and again, like Nathan said, I mean, this is our position, right? And, and it's vitally important that, you know, we screen candidates that we think can fulfill the need that we need, right? You know, so I, I agree with, you know, a department head, um, and maybe somebody from the community. But again, it, it ends up being, you know, I, I don't know how, who you pick, right? But, but the thing is, you know, we, we need to find people who just, don't just come in with their one area of interest, right? I mean, they need to have kind of a broad representation of, of what the town needs or else they're going to focus on that one thing. And then when the question comes up, they're going to focus on their one thing, right? And it just, it doesn't give anybody a good, a good representation. Now, the candidate doesn't really get a good feel for exactly what's needed throughout. Um, and then it, it really doesn't give us a good understanding of, you know, does the person, I mean, you know, like the four CVs we have, if we start getting CVs like that, I don't, I think it's going to be an issue finding a qualified person, right? Um, but again, it's finding the right person for Carlisle and, and, you know, the, the screeners, the more intricate or intimate they are with the details of, of, you know, what's going on in town. I think, you know, the, the better, the better it'll be. Because also too, you don't, you know, I mean, screeners, uh, we've all hired people before, right? Then, you know, you get 20 CVs and you can pretty, pretty quickly screen them down, right? You don't want the screening team just passing everything through because they think everybody's a good fit, right? You know, I mean, they have to serve a purpose, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So maybe, maybe since, you know, the government's task force was, was suggesting that the department heads report directly to the committee, maybe it's not department heads, you know? I think it's important for people, you know, people who report to this person. I, I think that there needs to be, there needs to be somebody on the committee, um, who fits that category.
Right.
Um, and so, but, but certainly I think, you know, Luke, I'd be willing to lose one, one staff member to gain another select board member. I was just trying to cut this down to the, the desired five people. Cause I do think it needs to be intimate. I do think it needs to be back and forth and not intimidating.
Right, exactly.
I, I, but if I could, uh, you know, John, John, I think, I think, you know, it, go with seven, go with seven people. I, I think that's a reasonable number. Five to seven is a reasonable number. So if you, you, you know, I, I, I would say feel comfortable with that.
If, if the board chair is the FinCom, because I think we all pretty much want a FinCom person.
We can't hear you, Dave.
You say, why do we want a FinCom person? I think for the reason, well, personally I believe in it, but for the reason Luke mentioned also, fielding questions about how the town is managed from the candidates. I believe you want a FinCom person at the table.
I, I thought one of you guys up there said you didn't think the FinCom needed to be there. So I don't remember who, whether it was Luke or Nathan that was questioning the FinCom.
No, I, I, I thought we should have a FinCom member, yeah.
Maybe it was no school.
Yeah, no school. I, I think Nathan and I both said no school.
I think I agree that we don't need the schools. I mean, we know enough about, I shouldn't, I'm going to rephrase that.
Yes, rephrase that, please.
The schools, we don't need representation on the committee from the students. So if you were to take schools out, again, I'll go back to my theory and consolidate, the board chair is the FinCom chair, then you're down two.
Yeah.
You're kind of there, you know, I mean, I, I, I don't agree, I guess, let me say it differently. I think it is a good thing to, I like your idea of having two, I don't know if they need to be department heads, but two people who would be working for this person, one of whom has got the legacy knowledge of how things work here and one who maybe has less of that. I like that. And as far as two at large or one at large, I'm sort of ambivalent on that.
All right. So, you know, I think the, what I'll, how about if I try this? I'll come up with a couple of possibilities based on this conversation to send them out to folks to see what you think. And, uh, I think we can work through you, Tim, right, to have feedback on that. And then at some point fairly soon, we should try to put some names to the, um, the, um, different representatives. I think this has been helpful. Um, there's one other thing I want to say. Oh, and, and also, um, we haven't really talked about sort of community input or staff input as we get further down the road. But I, I'm thinking about, uh, John and I have talked about this, trying to figure out a way that before the select board makes its, receives the finalists and makes a choice, that we have an opportunity, and John was saying, maybe it's even the afternoon of the evening of our select board meeting to, to do our own interviews of the finalists and, you know, begin to make a decision. But that we have maybe a meet the finalists kind of event here at town hall so people could come and, you know, hear from them. And of course, maybe that's not, uh, maybe that's too close to when, because they won't have a chance to give input. I'm kind of talking out loud here, but thinking out loud here. But anyway, that is something that we, I'll come, we can come back to discussing how we want to include, some community or additional staff input in the process. I think, yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say, we've, we've done that in several communities where it's done sort of, uh, the day, it, at the end of the process. So when the finalists come forward, we did that in Wellesley and Amherst, um, Shrewsbury. Uh, I think a couple of others that we, um, that we were, Brewster, Brewster did it the morning of the interviews. They did afternoon interviews on a Saturday. Uh, so some different ways of, uh, pulling that together. We, we do have time to work that through.
Great.
This, just, just to throw out one thing that, you know, perhaps was so obvious that we missed it. You know, uh, I guess I would throw out there that somebody who probably knows a lot about the process and the position and would be able to answer a lot of questions would be Jen.
Yep.
Yeah, our, the assistant to the select board, yeah, our administrative assistant. Good, we'll add that to the list. Um, all right. Um, I know we're running over time, but I think we should take just a few minutes, John. If you want to, uh, just update us all on the Thursday meeting where we're going to consider the four candidates whose resumes we received today for the interim administrator position. You're not expected to have gone over those resumes yet, but we should do that. Each of us should do that before Thursday night. Um, John, you want to describe a little bit how you see that process going?
Sure. So these are four candidates are, um, all seasoned people. Two of the candidates are retired managers, two candidates are in transition, uh, in the field. And so you have their resumes, they're all, um, they've all had experience, you know, as, uh, town administrators with some HR backgrounds, you know, uh, involved. And, um, so, uh, they're, they're all very familiar with town meeting. They're very familiar with the process, you know, of what occurs on a day-to-day basis. So, uh, what you're looking for is, is the person for the right fit for this four-month period, give or take, you know, who you think will work best, you know, to, um, you know, keep things in order, you know, in the time from when Tim retires April 1st to the new person starts. So we've set aside a half hour for each of the candidates, uh, working, uh, with Bonnie and Tim. And so we'll start at 7:30, uh, on, uh, Thursday, uh, to accommodate, uh, getting the board settled in. We've put together some questions, which, um, uh, Bonnie's been great helping. So, you know, after talking and, and trying to keep things focused on, uh, you know, the specific objectives of what a, uh, what the person, how the person sees the role, uh, you know, operating. So you can get a good fit with that, um, and then talk about relationships, um, you know, in the position. And then we'll let the candidate ask a question or two. And then, uh, board members can ask, you know, an additional question if they so, you know, uh, if they see fit in order to, you know, make sure, you know, uh, they understand the candidate, you know, as you move forward. So again, we've set aside a half hour, you know, for each of these candidates. But these, again, I, I want to restate are very seasoned people, you know, uh, from the business. So we've got that, uh, set up for, uh, Thursday night. I'll continue to work with, uh, Bonnie and Tim on, um, organizing that, uh, for Thursday night. So, uh, hopefully you can make a decision, uh, your decision at the end, uh, of that session. And then you can proceed to, um, to negotiate, um, uh, the, uh, the temporary contract, you know, with the person as to how that will move forward. I provided some information to both of them on, uh, you know, typical rates, you know, that, that's occurring, uh, in the field, uh, these days, uh, for interim folks. Uh, any questions on that portion?
Uh, just quick clarification, John. Um, the select board meeting will start at seven and then the first candidate will show up at 7:30. Is that the plan?
Yes, that's what, uh, that's what I believe you were looking for. So, uh,
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify that so that
Yeah, no, uh, we had, we had
Our board members showed up at seven rather than 7:30 in the first
That way you can talk and have a discussion prior to, make sure you're clear. And then we'll have the first candidate ready for 7:30. We originally had set it up at seven when I had worked with, uh, Tim and Jen, but I, I realized you're looking for 7:30. So we'll alter it and, uh, make sure the candidates are coming in at 7:30 for a half hour piece. So, um, I've already got an email out to one person to switch the time, um, and we'll make that happen so that you'll come, you know, with that process.
Yeah, and this is all going to be remote. Um, that, that's correct, right?
That's my understanding, you're, you're doing it
I know. I, I told, uh, some of the members of the board that I thought we'd be in person, but that was my error. Unless for some reason whether we as a board think we want to be here in person. No, the candidates are going to be virtual.
Yeah, posted, I, I looked at your website, you posted as remote, uh, solely remote on the website, so.
Yeah.
It'd be better than, hybrid are not as good as total remote.
Yeah.
In my experience.
All right. So we're, we're going to be totally remote on Thursday then. And, and I just want to add to, uh, one thing to what John was saying, which is, um, we should, John is urging us to, and I know it'll be late, but after that last interview, be prepared to stay, you know, for a half an hour, maybe a little longer if we thought we could reach a conclusion, you know, an agreement among the four of us. If we, if any of us want to think about it more, you know, deliberate, uh, just process more, hang on, just hang one second, Dave. So, um, if we don't want to do that on Thursday night or don't feel ready, that's fine. We then should schedule a time though, that's going to have to be an additional time to, we can't wait until March 8th because these candidates are, you know, going to want to find out soon. We don't want to lose somebody. So I think we need to be prepared to have a, a special meeting soon thereafter, um, to, to reach a decision.
You're leaving, you're going on a trip.
Yes, I'm going to be, I'm going to be out of town all next week. Oh, Monday, the 28th. Yeah. So it'll be tricky.
Right. So I, I don't like the idea of trying to reach a conclusion late at night while we're still processing.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a good process. I also am not a fan of waiting a week and a half or whatever, and then we kind of forgot what we, what we knew.
Yeah.
I would be okay with
A Friday.
Friday or maybe over the weekend. It's, you know, again, it could be Zoom. It doesn't have to be long time, but.
Right. And that's something, we'd have to post that though.
Okay, but are there any, are there any restrictions of like having a weekend meeting? You're not time constrained with a public meeting, right?
I don't believe so. As long as it's publicly posted and then people have access to the meeting, particularly if it's Zoom.
And because is there interim assignments, their names are public anyway, as compared to.
Yeah, it's a public meeting on Thursday night.
Right. So those candidates obviously are known to be looking as opposed to the other. We should think about, like, when other people should think about their own schedules.
I mean, could we tentatively schedule something for either Friday or Saturday?
Is a daytime meeting on Friday out of the question?
This would be a Zoom.
It's out of the question for me.
For you and Luke and, you know.
Yeah, I could do kind of mid to late afternoon on Friday. Yeah, morning's booked.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Nathan. I know it's tricky with a new job.
What's, you're not leaving on Sunday, right?
No, I'm here.
Sunday afternoon, maybe, Sunday evening?
I don't know if you can meet on a Sunday.
Yeah. You, you didn't, you weren't able to in the past. I don't know if the rules have changed, but Sundays were not allowed in the past.
That's why.
When I mentioned, yeah, when I mentioned that we did interviews on Sunday, that was in Rhode Island. Anything's legal in Rhode Island, so.
So I could, I could, I could do late afternoon on Friday, and I'd be doing it from Rhode Island, so that must be legal.
Yeah.
Well, could we, Kate, or how about you?
Yes, actually yes, because my Friday after, late afternoon thing is snowing on Friday. So my late afternoon thing with, with our.
Yeah, so. How, is late afternoon, four o'clock?
Yeah, so we're talking what, what, an hour or how long are we talking about?
An hour, I think. Four to five on Friday. Going once, going twice.
I mean, yeah, it's good for me.
You can make it work. We're, well, we need to, we need, we want everybody there, yeah.
I can't hear him, but I think you said three. I could do three.
Three too early?
You could do that, Nathan.
Yeah, I can do that.
Luke?
Yeah, yeah, I can do three.
Three o'clock? All right, let's, let's go with three o'clock. Post, post a meeting for three to four to, yeah, deliberate around the interim town administrator.
That's three, that's three to four Rhode Island time.
Okay, good. Thank you. And thank you, John, and Bernie, and the rest of the team from Paradigm. Thanks for your help so far. And this is exciting that we're going to already be interviewing candidates on Thursday. All right, I think we're ready to move on then.
Great, thank you, members. And if anything comes up, please give me a call or email me, and I'm available to talk if you want to talk further about some of the things we talked about tonight. Feel free to contact me.
Oh, right. And if any member of the Select Board wants to have further discussion with John, just in terms of input around the, the town profile or the town priorities or any of that, just let Tim know and he can connect you with John. Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you all.
Right, all. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. All right, well, we are way over time, 10:15. I'm just wondering if we could quickly do the, the transfer station, if we can. They're, they're eager beaver to go if we're comfortable with the new charge, which did get the seal of approval from Mr. Oskalilo. And then, Tim, I know you have some things on the, in your town administrators report, and we should be able to end after that unless there's a critical liaison report that needs to be made.
No, I had some, I had some amendments to the minutes, though.
Ah, okay, okay. I wonder if we could, maybe we could slip that in to one of the other two meetings we're doing this week.
It's up to you.
Okay, well, let's see how we probably get. Let's take a quick look at the transfer station.
You want me to give you a motion first and then you can talk about it?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I move to approve the transfer station action committee charge as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion in your packet is the rewritten draft, charge that includes some sort of the main responsibilities, simplified, I hope. And then there are five members that are interested in, in being appointed. But before we go to that, any, any comments about the proposed committee charge?
Not for me.
Comfortable to move ahead? Okay, so hearing no discussion. We've got a motion, it's been seconded. Roll call vote, please. Arnold, aye.
Oskalilo, aye.
Brown, aye.
O'Dell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you very much.
I move that the Select Board appoint the following individuals to serve on the transfer station action committee. Christine Lear, 120 Oakno Road. Ah, there's no terms in here.
Right, they're all going to be three-year terms.
Three years, okay.
I thought they were staggered. I thought they were staggered on that.
They are. The idea is, they all would start, this group would start at three-year terms, and then the, you know, it's an eight to 10 member group. The additional people that they would bring on would be for either one or two-year terms.
Okay.
Then you already have five people for three years.
Right.
So I think you want to divide that up if you have.
Well, there would be, I believe another five if they go up to 10.
Should be three, three, you know, three of, three at three years, two at two years, and one at, and three at.
What if just, what if we just did them all at one year? And we can get them going and we can reappoint, you know, we can, we can fix it.
That's a good idea. Let's just do that. Let's put them all in for one year.
Yeah, and then.
I get, yeah, just want, I don't want, you know, just want to get them going.
Going, I get it. Yeah, I, I agree, I agree. So, so these are, so Christine Lear, 120 Oakno Road for a one-year term. Tom Belota at 77 Nathan Lane for a one-year term, and John Petrie at 39 Baldwin Road for a one-year term.
And, and the two above, Rob Perry.
Well, they were already, they're already.
Well, they're, Rob Perry is actually up for reappointment to the household recycling.
I thought we appointed him last time. Okay, and Rob Perry at 32 East Writing Drive for one-year to term, and Dan Shulton, 21 Patton Lane for a one-year term.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, let's have a roll call vote to accept, to appoint these members. Arnold, aye.
Oskalilo, aye.
Brown, aye.
O'Dell, aye.
Reed, aye. Excellent.
I have a question. Do we have to do anything to disband the previous groups that we just combined into one?
Probably do.
Yeah, but they have, they did take a vote. But, yeah, I think they need to officially send something to us, right?
Or we just, we just discontinue the committee, right? I don't know, Tim.
Maybe we, well, let's.
You cannot appoint anyone in June, I guess, then the committee goes away, right?
Ah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't appoint any. To discontinue the charter or anything? Do we have to like, because we vote to create the committee? Do we have to vote to disband the committee?
It wouldn't hurt to say, yeah, we're effectively disbanding this committee and folding it into the.
Yeah, so let's do that at another meeting.
We can do that as a housekeeping thing in, in June.
Yeah.
After, after town meeting.
Right, okay, good suggestion. Great, let's move on to the town administrators' report, please.
Okay, the first item, there's some information attached from Allison Saylor for the board regarding no mo may. Looking for you to instruct the PPW to participate and assist in that this year. I'm sure Gary will be thrilled, but.
They've already, they've already talked with Gary and he's amenable.
Yep, I have heard.
This is on Center Park only, yeah.
Yep. So it's informational, really. Second item, the traffic and pedestrian safety committee met last week. And Luke may want to chime in on this. The two items mainly. One, it was a recommendation to install a dangerous intersection sign at West and South Streets. There's currently a slow sign there, and the recommendation now is to add a dangerous intersection to go with the slow sign on the same post. Chief Fisher will be sending a memo to the board to that effect.
So that would.
The next few weeks.
Can I just clarify? The slow sign would be on the West Street because there's no visibility from south.
I'm sorry, it is, yeah, it is west.
The hill?
Before it's, yeah.
Right, okay.
Because of the hill.
Yeah, it is, it is, it's scary to make that turn there. I make it frequently, yeah.
Yeah, people have ended up in the conservation land across the intersection. The, the second issue, which we discussed for quite a while, is the complaints regarding the signage in the Rotary Project, the Complete Streets Project. And we've looked into this quite a bit. And it, it turns out that the, the signage that was installed is larger than what is required. And it's larger, in fact, than what is spec'd on the engineer's plan. So there was evidently a miscommunication of some sort between the contractor and/or the engineers. The signs that are out there now are 36 inches in diameter, which is appropriate for a multi-lane roadway, which is two lanes in each direction, not a single lane. 30-inch diameter signs should have been installed. So we're, we're investigating changing those signs out with the, the correct size. However, some of the complaints that we had received, the number of signs was excessive, the color of the sign was offensive to some people. They brightly colored fluorescent color, and there's nothing we can do about that. That's for, for safety reasons, as well as the location of the signs. We can change the signs that are too large, and that, that was what the committee is recommending. We do think that the, you know, the project is operating kind of as advertised, it's slowing people down. There's a perception that it's safer. We realize it's a change, and it's, it's a visual issue for some folks. But really, the only thing that we can do anything about is the size of the signs and not, not the color or the location. So there was, the citizen that wanted to bring this to town meeting, however, she didn't submit a citizen petition, and we don't think it's frankly a town meeting issue. We think it's something the board can, can deal with on its own initiative. But Luke, anything you'd want to add to that, or?
No, I think you know that. Well done. Yeah.
So we'll, we'll replace those signs. Gary's looking into getting the smaller signs, which will make a bit of a difference, but, you know, I don't think it's going to make the.
It'll be spectacular. Six inches in diameter, I don't know.
Okay, moving on, the, the governor signed into law an extension of the rules for remote meetings, extending from April 1st now to July 15th, the ability to meet remotely as we're doing. Additionally, the option to reduce the quorum at town meeting to less than 10% has also been extended for use at this spring town meeting. So that's another issue the board may want to discuss. I wish I'd thought of this when the moderator was here, but I think we reduced it to, was it 100?
I think it was 75, yeah.
So 50%. Okay. And then finally, we have a road acceptance article on the warrant. The board has to formally vote to refer Lionsgate Road to the planning board for their recommendation so that you can then have a hearing in March on the road layout and, and receive the planning board's recommendation that night. And then town meeting ultimately decides whether it becomes a public way or not, so.
So I move we refer Lionsgate Road laid out, layout to the planning board for their recommendation.
I'll second that. Have we given them enough time to go through that process if it's March?
They, they had actually already scheduled the hearing, I think, for the 14th.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I asked that exact same question the last board of select meeting.
They, they, they had anticipated our request and scheduled their own hearing. So now we're, we're good according to Hoyle.
Yeah.
Also, go ahead.
No, sorry, I was just going to say, and there are no outstanding issues on that street? It seemed like for a while there, there were cons comm issues or border health issues or.
Plenty of boards looking into that, that there's a whole kind of trail of emails going back a couple of years with various issues. So the recommendation may not be positive. We don't know yet, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they'll, but they'll be the gate, not us, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I, I, I mean, I don't care. If we're the gate, then we're the gate. It'll just slow things down. But, but, you know, then we need the information to, to make the decision, because, yeah, need to make sure. It's the only leverage we got, so.
Yeah.
All right, and then attach the packet, we've got a notice of the town nominating caucus from the town clerk that the board needs to sign, you know, Jen's got the original. Town election would be Tuesday, May 10th, and what's the date of the caucus, Jen, was it say on there?
14th, yeah, of March.
Of March, correct. And then that'll circulate the signature, and then we've got a draft agenda for the 8th, which we'll meet later this week to kind of hash out that and maybe make some additions to it as well. And then the proposed schedules.
Right, because we need to have the cemetery fee discussion and then the assistant assessor proposal.
And I think it's too soon to vote a lot of the positions on the warrant articles on May 8th, on the next thing, since, I mean, a lot of those things we haven't had presentations on.
Yeah, I think someone requested that. But, yeah, I agree that, you know, normally you take positions, you know, in April.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you're assigning articles.
You need it for the warrant book, right?
Not necessarily.
Well, if, if, if it's not voted, then it doesn't get in the warrant book. It goes in the motion booklet.
Got it, so, okay.
Yeah, which is, which is fine.
So we may, yeah. Okay, so we can take that off, all right.
Right, just going to close the.
Yep, okay, and hopefully we'll, we'll have some resolution on the governor's task force article.
Yep, next time.
Okay. Okay, excellent. Can we hang in there for a few more minutes to, let's see. There is actually, let's see, is this a proposal from Allison? I'm just about the no mo may or we're okay, just. Okay, all right.
And do we need a vote for the citizens caucus? Because I think just Barney needs to sign it, so.
Vote to authorize the chair to sign the note.
Okay.
I move that we authorize the chair to sign the citizens caucus, what is it called, citizens caucus?
The nominate, the nominating caucus.
Nominating caucus. But this, what's the document called? Notice, thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Arnold, aye.
Oskalilo, aye.
Brown, aye.
O'Dell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Just to check to make sure the remote guys are awake.
Okay. Yeah, let's, and maybe Kate, if you have suggestions for Jen, you can get those to her.
Yeah, let me, I, I like the, the. Yeah, it was, it was specific content.
Well, just very briefly tell us what you were.
Mostly it was about the ARPA.
Okay.
There's a, there's a statement there says, "No action was taken this evening. It was agreed to take this matter under advisement pending further discussion and review of the project requests that were submitted." But there was no mention that, basically, ARPA was there requesting input from the Select Board in regard to its draft ARPA prioritization criteria, and that the board gave their, you know, the sense of the board was they were, you know, they supported the criteria. And I'm not sure we really want that last, whole last thing about no action taken.
Okay, you want to just send, send a.
If, if everybody is. If, if everybody is okay with that, that I would send to.
Yes, as our Madam ARPA leader.
Oh, and then there's some missing text on page two. And 7:30, as a joint, as a joint of the, yeah, okay.
So little edits like that.
So, but now, now that we've already done this, I would like to make a motion that the minutes of the Tuesday, February 8th, 2022, meeting of the select board be accepted as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please. Arnold, aye.
Askalillo, aye.
Brown, aye.
Ode, aye.
Reed, aye. Excellent. Okay. I believe, unless someone else has some important liaison report or other comment, we are ready to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote. Arnold, aye.
Askalillo, aye.
Brown, aye.
Ode, aye.
Reed, aye. Thank you all. It was a lot of.
Better not say fun.